Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Mason. It is our May 11th, 2020 regularly scheduled business meeting. We're so glad that you're here. We hope that you had a wonderful Mother's Day to all you moms out there. Thanks for all you do, especially if you're going a little bit crazy right now. As the mayor, I am considering asking my colleagues for some type of resolution declaring a Mother's Day redo once the economy is opened up. So maybe we'll have a work session or something like that on that topic. Anyway, we are ready to call things to order with a roll call. And then Vice Mayor Gilb, would you lead us in prayer when that's finished? Thank you. Mr. Hanson?
Member Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Chance?
Here.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Present.
Councilmember Stricula?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Here.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Here.
Mayor Grush?
Here.
If you would join me in prayers, we open our meeting. Dear Father, we just come before you tonight. We thank you for bringing us together. We thank you for bringing our economy back alive. And Father, we pray for all of our businesses, both locally, in our state, in our nation, and around the world, Father, Lord, that you just be with us as we recover from this pandemic, strengthen our, our health, keep us safe and secure, and help us as we, as we grow. Be with us tonight in our discussions and our deliberations. And in your name we pray. Amen.
Man, thank you very much. Okay, I need a motion to approve minutes from the April 23rd special meeting, the April 25th special meeting, and the April 27 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think we need any abstentions. So let's move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I actually have several items. Reference. End of this month, Monday, May 25th is Memorial Day. Offices will be closed in honor of the holiday. However, Rumpke Collection will not be impacted by the, by that closing. Also want to reference veterans. As in years past, Mason veterans can enjoy a free round of golf at the city's golf center Memorial Day weekend by presenting valid military ID. Also, the American Legion is sponsoring and will be streaming a Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, May 25th at noon. The annual parade had to be canceled. So the parade will not be occurring in Mason, but the American Legion will be doing that ceremony at noon on the 25th. Visitors are welcome and can view that by going to the city's website at ImagineMason.org and following the link to the live stream. In lieu of the parade, the city has been working with Veterans Group and reaching out to others and will be sponsoring a program where residents, as well as businesses, are encouraged to decorate their homes in honor of the day, show some patriotic and community spirit as they do that. And then we're asking and working with veterans who will be encouraged to explore some of those city neighborhoods, take photos of some of the homes that impact them or they felt best exemplified the spirit of Memorial Day. And then the veterans who participate in that will be eligible to receive a Come Together Mason gift card, as well as the, the homes that they select as best reflecting the spirit, will also be eligible to receive those gift cards. I want to provide some of an organized and incentivized way to, without a parade, telling those veterans, ask the veterans to socially distance, but still see the amount of pride in the community for both those who have served and those that who lost their life serving. So we'll be working on getting the word out on that through all the outlets and expressing appreciation for the veterans for working with us on that. It's also this type of year, and since that day does fall on our regularly scheduled council meeting, we typically look at a modified summer schedule, both to account for Memorial Day, as well as travel plans throughout the summer months. This year's summer may be a bit different on those travel plans. But I do believe that we could move to a summer schedule that the second meeting, regular meeting of each month, we could forego without posing a problem to legislation timeframes. Typically, in past summers, that has opened up the schedule somewhat, both for staff and council members, to accommodate committee meetings, as well as possible work sessions. If council wants to make such a modification to one meeting a month during the summer months, a motion would be in order.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, I think that is, gives our staff a great opportunity to catch up on a lot of work. And it also gives us time, if we can adopt legislation today, to implement some special programming that we're going to talk about a little bit later. Okay, Eric, I did lose my internet briefly, and I missed most of what you said. So do you have more to present at this time?
I do have a few more items. And what we would like to try and do is we have a video prepared that walks through the Come Together Mason gift card program, both from a residence perspective, a merchant's perspective, as well as a user's perspective. And while I believe Mr. Meister may be getting that set up for us, I'll give you a little bit of an update. The city has been using the Come Together Mason e-gift card program to encourage community support of small business, as well as leveraging the community center and our membership there. It's also available for individuals to go out and gift by purchasing a gift card for, for neighbors or friends. Since my, since the council packet, we have had an additional 100 gift cards that have been redeemed. So we're at a total value of $13,000 in gift cards that have been redeemed to local businesses. We had established expiration dates on those in order to encourage rapid activity in that. With that, Jennifer, Mr. Meister, are we able to, to move to the video? What I'd ask everyone, and the, the quality on this may vary for, for those watching at home, depending on their internet provider, asking everyone to put their mics on mute, there will be a link on the city's website for those that would like to view it there.
Here in the city of Mason, small businesses are the fabric of our community and contribute to the overall quality of life for our residents and visitors. Small businesses provide opportunities for entrepreneurs, jobs for our neighbors, and a sense of community spirit and pride. Recognizing the importance of small businesses in Mason, the city has created the nifty, yifty Come Together Mason e-gift card program using the online platform, Yifty. The Come Together Mason card is an electronic gift card that is redeemable at many of your favorite small businesses in Mason. Purchasing a Come Together Mason e-gift card is simple and easy. The following is a brief tutorial on how residents can purchase the nifty, yifty e-gift card, and how businesses can become a participating location for the e-gift card. We've been Mason residents since 2004. And as we look up and down Main Street here, we see so many small businesses and restaurants that we've enjoyed over the years. So we're really excited that the city of Mason has put together a gift card program called Come Together Mason, so that we can support these businesses right now in this difficult time. I'm going to walk you through this gift card program so that you can send gifts to friends and family really easily through email or text. To purchase, first go to the city of Mason's website at ImagineMason.org. Once you have arrived on this page, scroll down and click the link that indicates you want to purchase a Come Together Mason e-gift card. Once you click on the link, scroll down to the section that asks you to select the amount you wish to purchase on the e-gift card. Gift cards can be purchased in any amount between $5 and $250. A small fee is added to the total purchase amount, which is dependent on the total amount of the gift card. This is a small fee in exchange for the flexibility to be able to redeem the e-gift card at the business of your choice, and more importantly, keeping your dollars within the local Mason small business community. Once you have selected the amount you wish to place on the gift card, click Buy e-Gift Card. This will take you to the next page. The next step is to choose the recipient of the e-gift card. This could be a family member, friend, coworker, or even yourself. Type in the recipient's name, followed by their email address and/or phone number, depending on how you would like your recipient to receive the e-gift card. Yifty provides the option for the individual purchasing the gift card to be able to print the e-gift card to deliver to their recipient. Yifty also provides the option to add additional recipients or create a bulk order of e-gift cards. This is a great option if you are looking to send multiple gift cards of the same amount to several recipients at once. Once you have filled in the information on who you would like to send the Come Together Mason e-gift card to, you will be directed to a page where you can share a brief message with your recipient. Once you have created your customized message, please select the date on which you would like your recipient to receive the e-gift card. On the following page, you will be prompted to review your order for accuracy. Once you have made sure your order is correct, click Checkout. The next page will prompt you to sign in or create an account with Yifty. If you have an existing account, please log in with your existing credentials. If you are new to Yifty, create an account by typing your name and email address and creating a password. Once you have confirmed your password and clicked to accept the terms and agreements of Yifty, you will be prompted to enter your payment information. Once you have entered your payment information, click Place Order. Your recipient will receive their Come Together Mason e-gift card to their email or phone number from Yifty on the date you provided. Your recipient can now use their gift card at one or more of the multiple participating locations in Mason. To view participating locations, the recipient can simply click on Where to Use My Card when opening their e-gift card. The e-gift card does not expire. However, if the gift card remains inactive for one year, Yifty will deduct a portion of funds from the gift card once a month until the funds have been depleted. Once the gift card has been used, the one-year inactivity timeframe restarts. Next, we will provide a brief overview of how a business can sign up to be a participating location on the Come Together Mason e-gift card.
I'm the owner of Quatman Cafe here in downtown Mason. We are currently a participating member of the Come Together Mason e-gift card program. I'm going to show you today how simple it is to sign your business up and become a participating member as well. The first step is to visit the city's website at www/imaginemason.org and click on the Come Together Mason link. Once you have arrived on this page, scroll down and click on the link that says, I want my business to be a participating location. On the following page, click the tab on the top right of the page labeled For Businesses. Under the heading Become a Participating Business, click Apply to Join. A box will pop up that will require you to enter in some information about your business, such as your business name, address, website, email, and contact information. This will send a notification to the city of Mason so that they can verify that your business is located within the city limits to ensure that dollars spent with the e-gift card stay within the local community. Once the city has verified your business, the city will send an email that will include a link to an activation card. Following this activation link is the last step in becoming a participating vendor, but a very important one. The activation card is essentially a MasterCard loaded with 10 cents. Businesses are required to manually process this 10-cent MasterCard transaction in their point-of-sale system in order for Yifty to have access to your business's system so you can begin accepting Come Together Mason e-gift cards. Does your point-of-sale system have a minimum credit card transaction above 10 cents? No need to worry. Just run the card with the minimum amount. The transaction will indicate that it was denied. This will be enough for Yifty to be able to access your point-of-sale system so that you can start accepting the nifty, yifty Come Together Mason e-gift card. The city will confirm that your business has been activated and that you are now an official participating location with the Come Together Mason e-gift card.
Redeeming the Come Together Mason gift card is simple and easy. Visit one or multiple of your favorite Mason businesses that are a participating location with the card. When you are checking out, let the staff member know that you would like to pay with your Come Together Mason e-gift card. Show them your gift card on your mobile phone or print out your gift card and bring it with you.
Hello, I'd like to purchase something using my Mason Come Together gift card.
The business will then process the gift card by manually entering the gift card number, expiration date, and security code, just as you would when manually processing a MasterCard credit card.
Awesome. We'll go ahead and process that for you. How was everything today?
Great.
Good.
The purchase will automatically be deducted from the total gift card amount, and next time you go to use the e-gift card, the remaining balance on the gift card will appear. Participants can always check their balance by visiting the city's website and following the link to the Come Together Mason e-gift card page. We hope you will consider purchasing a Come Together Mason e-gift card to help support small businesses in Mason. The Come Together Mason e-gift card is a great option for gifts because it provides the flexibility for recipients to use at their favorite places, all while keeping the spending within the local small business community. On behalf of Mason City Council, the city would like to send a special thanks to all of the businesses who are currently supporting this initiative. We look forward to connecting with businesses who are interested in being a participating location in the future. For more information on the nifty, yifty Come Together Mason e-gift card, please contact the city of Mason by phone at 513-229-8500, or by email at administration@masonoh.org. Clicked to accept the terms and agreements of Yifty, you will be prompted to enter your payment.
We're back.
That was great. Thank you, staff. That was just wonderful.
As I mentioned.
Very informative.
Hey folks, were not able to view that or it cut out. It is available on the city's website to review. And again, just to distinguish, that is our e-gift card program, different than a traditional gift card program that individual merchants may have. Just two other items, Mayor. A reminder, city's calendar photo contest does end Friday, May 29th. Those that have been taken in Mason city limits are eligible for a prize when we release those calendars. The calendar is supported by sponsorship ads from area merchants and service providers. This again is for the 2021 calendar and would anticipate having those winners and the calendars available later this fall. And just briefly, I wanted to touch on update from Instant Command as the city is shifting into what we're calling the Return to Work phase, even though it feels like we've been doing an awful lot of work during the, I don't know how we could return to any more work. But we are in what we're calling Phase One of that Return to Work Plan, which for city employees brings us to what we're calling a critical operational level as distinct from the emergency operational level that we've been at. So folks like utility employees, police and fire employees, there's no change for them because their staffing has remained through their typical staffing to the emergency level. But for other employees, Phase One involves bringing them back, utilizing social distancing. They're approximately working about 20 to 30 hours per week during this phase to try and start catching up on the backlog of work that has accumulated throughout all departments over the past several weeks. Where the Instant Command has researched and says, having departments follow best practices from the CDC and the Ohio Department of Health to maintain a healthy work environment. So things such as social distancing, wearing face coverings when out of your workplace, limiting in-person interactions, which includes customers are all being put in place, while staff members that are able to work from home are continuing to do so. The intent here is to try and spread out, lower the density of employees, how often they have contact with, with others. Still do not know when we'll move to the next phase of implementation, Phase Two. That'll be determined as we hear more as kind of the rolling guidance from the state and the CDC occurs. But the community center and parks has been a specific area of interest for Instant Command. And what a lot of our customers and public, and we get a lot of input, folks wanting us to hurry up, hurry up and open faster, and other folks that, that want us to be very cautious and are very concerned that we not go too fast. So we have a quantity of input there and trying to find the right balance. And a lot of folks that the ambiguity and the uncertainty of knowing dates has been problematic when they're thinking of, should I schedule something or not? So in effort to try and give some, strike that balance between things change rapidly, but also give some certainty. Working with Instant Command, we have determined that the community center will be physically closed, certainly until June 8th. We'll reevaluate that decision and possibly have different dates by June 1st. That can all change based on announcements from the governor, Department of Health. City-owned fields and parks are closed to organize activity through June 15th, and we will revisit that decision by June 8th. We felt this was the best way to let folks know some degree of certainty when, when those facilities would not be available versus when they could become available. Summer camps have been canceled through June, and then we'll be evaluating on a monthly basis thereafter. So I know there's a lot of interest. There's a lot of guidance and ambiguity seems to be the rule of the day. We're trying to find that right balance to give folks some certainty and also keep some flexibility so we can adjust to different circumstances. With that, Mayor, wanted to continue to thank council as well as our public for just an excess of patience as we, as we struggle both with the demands and the workload that continues to mount and as well as bounce that with some confidence that things will be returning to more static service levels. But there will be a lot of time to catch up on, on the past several weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, you have a question?
I do. I have a question on the Yifty Nifty gift card program. Some things that I was wondering, the fees. There has to be fees involved for the businesses when they're cashing these in. I heard that one of the $25 gift card was a $4 fee. Is that correct?
The merchants should, there are no fees that either the city or the Yifty program gets from merchants. Now, the city or anyone that is purchasing a gift card, as part of the purchase of that gift card does pay a fee. And I think that fee varies depending on the, the dollar amount, but there is a transaction fee, I would say of around $2. That is paid by the person purchasing it. Beyond that, and the best guidance I can give is it's like a MasterCard. And, and whatever a business that trends, that does MasterCard transactions, they have an arrangement with MasterCard based on their individual contract with MasterCard where they pay an amount to MasterCard for those transactions. This card falls under that same, same fee. So the merchant isn't paying the city or Yifty, they're paying their fee to MasterCard.
That's right. Okay, which is usually like 3% around there. What about, so it, after one year of being dormant, there is dormant fees? Who, who gets to keep that money? When the value of the gift card, I think it said after one year will decline. Who gets to keep that?
I believe if an individual has purchased a gift card that goes unused for a year, and that graduated kind of depreciation of the card, I believe that would, that would go to Yifty for the expense of keeping that card activated beyond the one year.
Okay. And, and I'm just going to voice my concern again, because I always have this concern. With the gift card programs, it always worries me that there's a huge percentage of our businesses that are kind of being left out because it just, they're not gift card type dentists. You know, if it's not a storefront, a bar, or a restaurant, a gift card may not be benefiting them. So that's always, you know, a huge concern of mine. But okay, thank you for the information. I appreciate it.
And Councilmember Nelson, as long as they take MasterCard, it works. It's like buying a prepaid MasterCard. It just only works at businesses who have signed up. And so I, my dentist takes a MasterCard, so hopefully, you know, it will offer a lot of accessibility to offices like that that don't normally do gift card programs. So let's hope this is successful and yeah, anywhere you can use MasterCard. Okay, and then I thought I, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say one more thing, too. If a company does not take MasterCard, it's super easy to sign up with Square. So just to throw it out there, if you're sitting there thinking, well, we don't take MasterCard, you might want to look into that because it's really easy to set up. And this will allow you to be part of the program.
I'm so glad you asked that. That was a really great question. I actually called Eric and asked the same questions. A couple of weeks ago, I had a resident asking me some questions about it. Councilmember Chance, did you have a question about the nifty, yifty? I thought I saw your hand.
Yeah, I was going to ask the exact same question about the inactivity because we all, you know, there's been a few times in our meetings we talked about, you know, our goal was not to, as some of these don't go redeemed. And if they're sitting there and if, if I buy Eric a $100 gift card like I do all the time, then he doesn't use it. And then he, and then that money just goes to the nifty, yifty program. I just, that doesn't sit well with me. So I would think that if, you know, we've talked also about putting time limits or expiration dates attached to these things. I think it would be prudent to do something along those lines. So if I do buy a gift card and I gift it to somebody and it's $100 and, you know, I, you're going to ask my wife, I lose mine a lot, or I forget where I put them. And then that money just shifts right back to nifty. That, that doesn't sit too well. So I think if we, if we put some sort of expiration on it, would be smart.
Eric can address that as well. Another great point you just brought up.
First, I want to address that I have never spent any of those $100 gift cards from Councilmember Chance.
Whatever.
Not one. Two things, though, it's probably important to distinguish as we talk about this, the, the gift card platform works for individuals. And, and what you heard on that video was largely geared towards individuals. So if, if I buy a gift card for my neighbor, that one-year timeframe, which I think is typical in the market, exists. So if they, they don't spend it, it does start to depreciate. And that's really my expense because I bought it for them and their foregone, you know, ability. Now, if the city operates as a bulk purchaser of gift cards, so I'm not just buying a one-off gift card for, for a couple of friends or neighbors, we're buying them for, say, what we've done so far for premier members of the community center. And because we're a bulk purchaser, we get a couple of some flexibility that individual purchase wouldn't get, such as setting expiration dates. Such as if, if the gift card is, is lost or unspent, we may pay a transaction fee, but ultimately the cost for that foregone gift card isn't paid by the city, that those dollars return to the city. So as a bulk purchaser, you get a lot more flexibility and latitude and how you can kind of set that up. But as individual purchasers, which we would encourage because it gives you a lot of variety on different, you know, merchants to use locally, like any other, you know, gift card that you buy, it's, treat it like cash because it's lost, you know, it's, it's, it's gone.
I'm really glad you brought that up. So if, if it goes unspent and it's bought by a private individual, then it's just like a normal gift card would be lost and you've lost that investment. But if the city buys it because we're a bulk purchaser, we can set expiration dates so that we can be very intentional about stimulus we want to provide. And then as well, if someone chooses not to use their gift card or they lose it, it just goes back in the pot and we don't lose that, say, $100 investment if it was a $100 card. And then the private individuals' cards depreciate after 12 months, correct? Do the city's cards depreciate after 12 months?
Not when we set the expiration date.
Okay. So it's a really, it's a really cool platform. It, you know, we're, we're doing two different platforms because we recognize the need to do a traditional program as well with the made CDC. And we'll have more about that later. They're working on that program and getting that off the ground. Okay, are we ready to move on to Captain Lindig Schmidt? That would be item number five, recognition of our Police Memorial Week. And Captain Paul Linden Schmidt is here to address us. There he is.
Mayor, if I could introduce Paul, first of all, oh, you guys stand up closer. We, we can't see you. And you're going to have to take that off, that microphone off mute so we can hear you. Jennifer may have to help him. While, while she's doing that, this is Police Memorial Week, and so we
And so we wanted to have Captain Linden Schmidt tell us a little bit about that. But I want to tell you a little bit about Captain Linden Schmidt first. Captain Linden Schmidt has served the city of Mason for 39 years, 11 months and 26 days. And probably maybe about one fourth of that time, he has been trying to retire. And I've been a thorn and obstacle and Captain Lynch, can you hear me, Paul?
It echoes.
Can you hear me, Paul?
Yes.
I just described to council, you're somewhat, you're falling short of a significant anniversary date today.
I couldn't hear.
Paul? Today, Paul, can you hear me?
Barely.
I think we may have the volume on that microphone turned down, on that microphone, that, the speaker on that computer because the issues earlier.
Maybe Jennifer's trying to turn that microphone up. Paul, give me a thumbs up when you can hear.
All right.
Can you hear us, Paul? You gotta have turn your, unmute your microphone, Paul.
Jennifer needs to unmute hers since we can't have both of them on, we can't have the audio from one and the other microphone muted. It'll create that feedback. There we go. Go ahead and face it towards him and he should be able to go.
Can you hear me, Paul? Can you hear me, Paul? Okay, I'm, maybe if Jennifer will unmute her microphone.
There's nothing like a little live stream action.
Jennifer, is your microphone unmuted?
Mute now. Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Paul was just describing to council your anniversary date today, 39 years, 11 months and 26 days.
Yes.
And I was telling them that I think for about a fourth of that, you've been trying to retire. And I've repeatedly asked you, stick around just for a year or two more. And Paul has graciously obliged because we need someone with his experience to lead the transition, the police departments. And to Paul's credit here, a couple of weeks ago, he had been planning on retiring the end of this week when he hit 40 years. And I had finally consented that, that we'd let him do that. A couple of weeks ago, several weeks ago now, Paul had come in and for the first time in my life, he asked me, because he thought he'd probably need to stick around a little bit longer to help get us through this pandemic. So the pandemic got me my wish, which is Paul going a little bit past 40 years. But Paul has been, he's, well, obviously one of the most tenured senior employees of the city of Mason. We felt it was very appropriate this time in lieu of the retirement that we might've been planning for him otherwise, to have him come in and talk to us about Police Memorial Week. Thank you, Captain Lind Schmidt.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Good evening. Thank you for providing me. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the calendar week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. In 2019, 128 federal, state and local law enforcement officers died in the line of duty. The leading cause of officer deaths were firearm related, followed closely by traffic related fatalities. Among these 128 law enforcement officer deaths were three in the state of Ohio, all from counties adjacent to Warren County. Officer Dale Woods from the Corrane Township Police Department, Detective William Brewer from the Claremont County Sheriff's Office. And Detective William Brewer, I'm sorry, and Detective George Del Rio from the Dayton Police Department. These deaths were particularly difficult for some members of our department who knew these officers personally. Every year, the FBI releases a summary of law enforcement officers who have been feloniously killed in the line of duty. And every year, when I read this, I think about how our officers are performing the same duties and are involved in the same situations. But fortunately, do not result in the same outcomes. Unfortunately, almost all the formal ceremonies that are normally held recognition of National Police Week have been canceled due to the coronavirus. I would like to thank Mason City Council for providing this opportunity to recognize and support National Police Week and National Peace Officers Memorial Day. I now ask for a moment of silence and remembrance and honor of those officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Wow. He's gonna be missed. I'm glad he's, he's seeing us through this difficult time. I don't know, Eric, maybe you can persuade him to stay another year. Well, really special. We appreciate that. Okay, item number six on our agenda is Resolution 2020 dash two. We need a first reading. So I need a, a reading, a motion to read that by title only. Make that motion. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, Jeff?
Resolution 2020 dash two, adopting the budget of the city of Mason for the year January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021.
Mayor, we'd like to set a public hearing for this on June 8th when we discuss it further. Just by way of reminder for those watching, despite its name, this is not the actual budget for 2021. This is a procedural process that we go, go through to justify allocation of state revenues and to request the property tax rates from the Warren County Budget Commission. So it is a little bit of a misnomer, but it is an important part of the process as a prelude to the budget process we'd go through later this year.
Okay, we'll have a public hearing for 2020 dash two on June 8th at 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM ish, our business meeting starts. Okay, item seven is ordinance 2020 dash 50. I need a motion read by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Ah, Mr. Seiler. Oh, no, Jeff, we need you to read the title. Excuse me.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with TEC Engineering, Inc. for $50,400 to operate and maintain the city's traffic signal system and to execute up to four annual renewals.
Mr. Seiler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a brief background for this one. This started back in 2007 as a test with TEC. Back when we had 39 signals, we got multiple complaints per week. We had just really in a reactive mode where we would just call a signal contractor each time we got a complaint, they would come out and, and take a look at it. So as a test, we did a one-year contract and that year we saved $30,000 with that signal contractor. So with the test being a success, we, we did subsequent contracts to that. The last one being 2012 to 2016, a five-year contract. Since then, in 2016, we did the fiber optic project that took us about three years to finally complete about 30 miles of fiber optic cable between all of our signals. We now have 42 signals that we operate on the system with another six from ODOT and two from Warren County. So a total of 48 signals on the system. I'm sorry, four, four from ODOT and two from Warren County. Since that time and in 2017 and, and to today, we've been on a month to month in, at the 2016 rate with TEC. And so what's before you tonight is a new five-year agreement. To continue that, that service. One thing I want to bring to your attention is about 36 of our signals in the system are at least 10 years old. That tends to be with it being a 365 day a year, 24 hour day signal operation, they can range from 100 degree days to below zero. We can have intermittent problems with the signals that are tough to diagnose. And so it's, it needs some constant oversight. With our fiber optic system, we are able to better detect these and more, more quickly assess the situation. And so that's one reason why we didn't want to take a new contract to counsel until we understood the efficiencies of our new system. Now that we have that, we're able to do all the things in the, the previous contract and hold again the 2016 rate through the first year of the contract. In addition, TEC will do retiming of up to probably three corridors per year, which will result in all the signals in our system being re-timed over the five-year period of this agreement. Which is good practice to have efficient timing within the city. Daily driving habits can change over a couple of years. And so it's good practice to every three to five years, retime your signals and your corridors and make sure they're operating efficiently as possible. So with that, this is a proactive, comprehensive approach to our traffic signal management system. It again reduces our annual maintenance costs and it's significantly less than the cost of what we would pay a full-time traffic engineer. And in exchange, we get the entire team of TEC, very qualified, knowledgeable staff that both ODOT and Warren County are comfortable with operating their signals as well that are part of our system. So with that, the, it is a five-year agreement with a $75 increase per year. That's to the monthly fee. Over, which is a little less than 2% per year over the, over the five-year period. With that, ordinance 2020 dash 50 is recommended and I'll answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion to adopt.
Removed.
Second.
Council discussion? Councilmember Chance?
Yeah, I just have one question, Kurt, in regards, I think you and I've talked about this before, the, like on 42 in Tyler'sville, like during the day when we get a solid red turn signal opposed to a flashing yellow. Who makes that decision? Is that TEC engineering or is that something that we can adjust? I've, I've always just been confused by those.
Yeah, it's, it's a, that, that type of decision is both TEC and our staff, myself and Steve Hardke are involved with that. That, that flashing yellow arrow was put in several years ago and, and initially it was just a, the, if you remember, it was a three-section head with just a green arrow only and, and green and red arrow. And that was a result of a safety study. We had several very bad accidents at that intersection and they all occurred during peak hour. So during, during the week, that intersection is very busy all day long and there's, the peaks are kind of insignificant because it's so heavy all, all day long. But we did make the decision to on weekends and in the evening hours to add that flashing yellow arrow. But just because of the safety study, our accidents have been much lower at that intersection. So really we've, we've been a little reluctant to just make a flashing yellow arrow all the time.
All right, good. I figured there was a rhyme to your reason, Kurt. I was just making sure.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes, uh, just to show some of the whiskers that I've had, I seem to remember in 2007, yanking Mr. Richard Fair down to the TEC office on Northland Boulevard in Springdale. When Richard Fair wanted to go ahead and hire a full-time person to do what we're doing right now. It was amazing actually to me, and I think obviously to Richard, that, you know, the gentleman could go ahead and control all the traffic signals from his laptop. In his bedroom, if he wanted to make those adjustments based upon events, maybe a football event or whatever. So sometimes it, it is advantageous to not be at the chimney. Go ahead and look at what other communities have done. And Kurt, would you say it's been so far for what we're doing, we're ahead of a number of communities?
Yeah, I'd say it's been a success. And, and actually, Springdale did it. We have done it. And then since then, Butler County does some with TEC. And like I said, ODOT has some of their signals are in our system as well in Warren County. So yeah, it's been, been great.
And so the residents, I would say, as, as bad as you think it is, it could be a whole lot worse. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Item eight, ordinance 2020 dash 51. I need a motion to read by title only, please. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you. Temporarily amending the sewer rate for residential, commercial, industrial and institutional establishments and multifamily dwellings. And authorizing the city manager to establish a utility stimulus gift card program and declaring an emergency.
Eric?
Yes, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to address the next two ordinances together because there is some, some overlap and linkage here. And I'm going to try and be very brief. I expect there will be some questions, so I'm kind of anticipating further explanation to the questions. Both Finance and Economic Development Committees have been through some of the, the basis of this. A little bit of background, as councils are aware, it seems like many months, but it's just some weeks ago, the city established a business recovery team led by Michelle Blair and Joe Regelsberger with Economic Development and Finance. To help define the city's role as we help our businesses get through the shutdown and an emphasis on long-term recovery. The result is what we've tiered a multi-tiered recovery program to try and help both address immediate needs as well as strengthen the future resiliency of our economic base. A couple of the, the initial items that were rolled out early, we already talked about the Come Together Mason gift card. At this point, used to enhance community center membership while also cross-marketing and driving business to small, to our small businesses. The team also worked to enhance the city's website, providing resources specific to small businesses. And navigating their way through the recovery, specifically federal and state programs that continue to be developed to assist that. Over the past month, they've focused on direct business recovery program, trying to keep in mind that we have a diverse business base. Wanted to have a process that wasn't unduly complicated. More immediate assistance has more value than delayed assistance and also something that could be scalable and adjust to, to long-term recovery of our entire economy in Mason. The, the team understood from the outset that some of these programs would require the need for a separate organization to act as a, as a conduit to provide this assistance. And they're also aware that there are several efforts being discussed and, and materializing at different rates. Both through organizations such as the CDC, the Community Improvement Corporation. both through organizations such as the CDC, the Community Improvement Corporation, Warren County, private businesses. And so our ambition had been to try and situate the city's program to benefit and maybe to be a conduit to whatever other programs may develop or grow and all of those. Specifically, working with the CDC, which was our third effort here and had announced the CDC has, we now have a fully executed service agreement in partnership with the CDC with city sponsorship to execute a traditional gift card program. And would expect in coming days to hear more timeframes on that and how to move forward on that. That had been authorized by council with ordinance twenty twenty forty-three. Hope to use that in our partnership with the main chamber in the CDC to to provide as simplified and as common a database and an application process for Mason businesses on both city programs, CDC programs, and any other programs that we develop. As I mentioned, the economic development committee met last week, recommend recommended moving forward with this combination of programs that I want to briefly describe. The approach to recovery pays attention both to the consumer. So the demand side as well as the businesses on the supply side. So you have several different pieces moving here. The first part is specific to utility bills. The city is a utility provider and charges utility fees in the form of sewer fees. We do that in conjunction with Greater Cincinnati Water Works, which which provides all of the billing. And the proposal is that every sewer customer, both resident and business, would receive a one-month sewer bill waiver equal to what their current usage charges are for that. For most residents, you're probably talking something around sixty dollars a month, which would be the the would be a typical sewer charge for for a resident. In addition to that, as part of that that program, resident sewer customers would be encouraged to communicate information to the city, their email specifically, to help our utility fund have a good database of who our customers are. And in exchange, would receive a and what's recommended is a fifty-dollar Come Together Mason gift card that would be available to any of the merchants that are participating. We had also been encouraging additional merchants in light of this proposal to sign up so that they're accessible. Between those two, the sewer bill waiver, and you have to consider that is revenues that the city would be foregoing, not collecting. That would be approximately a seven hundred thousand dollar waiver of fees of revenues. And then the gift card at a fifty-dollar level level could be as much as five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of expense to the sewer fund. Economic Development Finance reviewed this right prior to this meeting and feel confident that that does not disrupt, will not lead to rate increases, and can be absorbed by our utility fund. There is also a recommendation for an amendment made by the committee to allow for and accommodate a potential second wave of gift cards as part of this based on additional government directives as well as the the extent and the depth of of utilization that we find from that first first output. That those two pieces of the utility fund program are authorized by ordinance twenty twenty fifty-one. The next piece, and there are two elements to this that are authorized by ordinance twenty twenty fifty-two, directed towards businesses. What is called the Small Business Service Initiative is intended to provide immediate relief to those businesses most impacted by the government shutdown. It would have a maximum benefit of a thousand dollars per applicant and would be based on developing a customized partnership that supports their operations and their continued ability to market their business. And leverage that with the city's mission. So that would be a maximum of a thousand dollars per applicant available. The next piece of that, the next tier is a Small Business Expense Forgivable Loan Initiative that would provide relief for expenses, again, by businesses most directly impacted by COVID nineteen, help them take a step towards long-term sustainability. So it would be targeted and would look at factors such as the payroll they generate, a payroll that also generates the primary source of city earnings tax revenue. It would be available to all customer-facing retail storefront service industries, everything from restaurants to dentists that have fifty employees or less and about one million dollars or less in payroll. The maximum benefit ranges would depend both on the level of interest and the funding available that council authorizes. Anticipated to be twenty-five hundred dollars up to a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars per applicant based on a formula that is grounded in in the payroll number that they generate and that they would sustain in the long term. To the extent that that payroll is sustained, say twelve months out into twenty twenty-one, then that grant, whatever amount that would be, would be forgivable. I'm sorry, that forgivable loan would be forgiven. Economic Development Committee had discussions with legal counsel and staff and determined that the Mason Community Improvement Corporation, or CIC, would be the best administrative arm to to provide the oversight and the control necessary to move forward those two programs. And recommended funding in a total amount of seven hundred thousand dollars. Anticipated tiers of two hundred thousand for the first program of five hundred thousand, but the committee wanted to make sure that there was some latitude as the need was identified and the depth of that, that that seven total of seven hundred thousand could be equitably split be split between both of those tiers. Ordinance twenty twenty fifty-two then authorizes a service agreement with the CIC in order to administer those two programs. What would then happen is the CIC, once they execute that service agreement, would both city staff and contract assistants as necessary would be utilized to provide the support staffing for those two programs. Anticipate that we between these, we would work with the CDC as well as the CIC to develop a collaborative application process to try and streamline all these efforts for all Mason businesses. The recovery team anticipates staying abreast of all the developments, both our own program as well as what may continue to develop federally and in the state, and continue to reach out to small businesses as well as their advocates, such as the main chamber, to learn how we can continue to provide assistance and and move these programs forward to benefit the economic health of the entire community. With that, the Economic Development Committee recommends both of those ordinance moving forward, and they may wish to speak to the amendment that was discussed earlier if council wishes to move on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Vice Mayor Gilb?
Are you asking for, are we in discussion of this?
I think this is the time, this is not the time to ask for the amendment. Do we wait till council discussion? I'm sorry.
Typically, that's historically, that's how we've handled it. There'd be a a motion to adopt in a second, get into council discussion, and then if amendments are to be introduced, that's typically when they are.
Okay, I got excited. I got I started rushing. Okay, I need a motion to adopt, please.
I thought we did that, but so moved.
No, we didn't yet. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any council discussion?
Yeah. Mayor, I would just say that I I'm excited to see this legislation in front of us, which certainly has the opportunity to, at least through fifty-one. As I see, it's two pieces. The first piece is an immediate for waiver or forgiveness of the sewer rate fees for all the residential, industrial, commercial businesses in Mason. And the report we had heard in the finance committee was that that affects about eleven thousand customers in Mason and results in just under seven hundred thousand dollars of immediate foregone revenue from the city. Hopefully, that revenue flows back into Mason businesses. Certainly, we don't control where those dollars go to, but but the intent, I think, would be that as people have the more dollars in their pocket, they would use those dollars to assist our our local small businesses. But certainly, a second component to this ordinance is the e-gift card program and an allocation of fifty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, five hundred thousand dollars in exchange for receipt of information from those customers in terms of giving us information that the city may request from them, email addresses that it can help build our our sewer fund in terms of being able to communicate with them. And certainly then, those receiving a fifty-dollar gift card, those gift cards would be directed to be used solely at a Mason business and the opportunity to immediately impact up to a half a million dollars by way of expenditures in our local businesses and certainly an effort I would support. And if I could speak on for a moment to ordinance fifty-two, which we're going to, I think, consider next, certainly another round of seven hundred thousand dollars of direct impact. Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb, was there any way to like do these one at a time? Because
Yeah, I guess we could. I was just, I was just, I was just trying.
Trying to combine these, I think it's, you know, I appreciate the brevity side of things, but I think let's, if we could discuss these one at a time, I think it'd be helpful for me to understand it instead of trying to.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I was just trying to point out that, you know, the total impact is over two-point-two big ma- million dollars. And I think as we look at that, it's it's a great opportunity for us. I don't think I don't think there's any other cities, any other municipalities that I'm aware of in Ohio that are looking at this kind of innovative program and a way to to help bring immediate economic engine and growth into our our businesses as we come out of this pandemic. So I just wanted to mention that. But certainly fifty-one is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars of immediate forgiveness of sewer fees and a five hundred thousand dollar allocation for gift cards for people that want to sign up for them. And I think a great opportunity, certainly finance committee would recommend that it be adopted. And I certainly support the effort to adopt it. Thanks, Mayor, for the opportunity to talk about it.
You're welcome. Would this be a good time to offer the motion? Or do we want to continue with council discussion and then we'll get to the motion to amend?
Yeah, perhaps I could. It's so as we've heard in the media, there's some concern, the experts are talking about a potential second wave of coronavirus coming back and what that's going to, whether whether the governor is going to order another shutdown of our businesses in the fall because of that second wave is an unknown. But I would certainly like to see us build into this program a second wave of economic stimulus for those businesses that may be affected if there is a secondary shutdown. And I would I would propose an amendment to help fund that second wave of an additional half a million dollars that be authorized. And and I've asked Jeff to prepare some language about that. Jeff, if you could just read that language, that may be the best way to get it onto the onto the floor.
Certainly, Vice Mayor, and and this was the this was the amendment that was offered during the finance committee meeting just prior to the council meeting. If you were to look at ordinance twenty twenty-five-one, specifically section five, the section five now states that there is hereby appropriated from the sewer utility fund an amount of five hundred thousand dollars to fund such program. The proposed amendment would add the following language. An additional five hundred thousand dollars may be appropriated from the sewer utility fund for a second round e-gift card program to eligible sewer customers upon submission of sufficient identifying information to be utilized if needed based upon further government shutdown or slowdown orders as well as the rate of redemption of initial gift cards to be determined by the city manager.
Is there such a motion?
Mayor, I would I would offer that as an amendment to fifty-one.
Is there a second?
Can we talk about it before we've?
Well, well, we need a second, and then we'll have council discussion on the motion, yes. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, any council discussion? On whether or not to amend, make that amendment. Council member Chance?
Yeah, I, you know, kudos to first, you know, Michelle, Joe and staff for coming up with with this opportunity in creative way. I know this has been around probably for about ten years. I think the original name was like the Mason Bucks and being a being a utility that gives us that type of control and that's and that's and also listening into the finance meeting and also talking to Joe and Eric, understanding our reserves and our in our utility or our sewer fund. It's pretty darn healthy and being able to utilize that is smart. And again, well-done staff for coming up with this. And in the spirit of this being for small businesses. And and, you know, I'm not completely opposed to the amendment by any means. But what I I think it would be smart if we were to, could we see how this worked first? Because if I look at this, the process of it is, you know, I have it pulled up here that, you know, in the spirit of wanting to help small businesses, ninety percent of our customer base are individuals. And, you know, I hate to say it quite frankly, a lot of these small businesses are shut down. So understanding that we're giving this break for the for the sewers, perfect, sixty bucks. But then I think this is where the clunkiness comes into play. They have to send in an email to the city, and then the city is going to send them a gift card that then it's up to the customer or the citizen or constituent to go out and purchase. So before making this an additional five hundred thousand dollars, I would like to see where these funds are going. Are they going into a small business? Or, you know, can a grocery store, you know, can they sign up for this thing? Because, you know, a lot of people, what do we have to do? We still have to buy groceries. We don't have to go out to eat. We don't have to go, you know, to these customers or these front-facing customers. And so that makes me a little nervous to go ahead and advance this cause or advance this number without being able to vet out the process. Kudos, I love it. I think we should take fifty-two and make it a million dollars instead of seven hundred thousand. I think that is more the speed of really directing funds towards the small businesses. So I'm all for this, maybe at a later date, though. I think right now is I would really love to see the the engine, you know, put some water in the pipes, see what happens, see if it works. I would love to see where these funds are are being funneled to. And if the customers actually showed up getting their sixty dollars and then either, you know, I know it's in exchange for a service, and that service can be just about anything. But I would like to see this thing work prior to doubling down. Because like I said, there's a major, there's a big grocery store here locally. And if they signed up and four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of it went to go buy groceries, I'm not interested in doubling down on that because I guarantee you, the grocery stores are doing pretty darn well right now.
So we've got to
I agree with that, but
Let's hold on real quick, and we'll talk about the nuts and bolts of implementation momentarily because you really raise a great point. And why would we do it all at one time if we if we organize another investment or another stimulus? And I'm trying to remember the exact language of the motion. Does it specify that it would only go to another round of gift cards in section five, that 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 amendment? I'm sorry, I've forgotten already.
Yes. Essentially, yes. What the what the amendment proposed was an additional five hundred thousand dollars for a second round of e-gift card program.
And I'm good with it. Like I said, the gift cards are cool. That's great if if they're being pointed in the right direction. If they're being pointed at some big, large, can I hold on just a second? If they get if they get pointed into some big, large grocery store chain and ninety percent of our constituents are using it there, I'm not a big, huge fan of paying for groceries.
So Eric has an answer for that. So that's something we've thought of.
Ultimately, the city. And we have left this pretty broad to Mason businesses. But we have the ability to filter what businesses are placed on our Come Together Mason gift card. So, for example, if a business outside of the city, and we've had one of those that has had left the city, they're no longer part of the the gift card program. So there is the ability in the example like like you raised for a large grocer, if they were to apply to be in, we could certainly to be in, we could certainly communicate to them that that isn't the intent of the program. We may want to for this year, make sure that that those businesses that are in the program fall under similar definition as is in ordinance fifty-two as, as far as fifty employees or less walk-in traffic. The intent is really to identify those businesses that have been most impacted by, by the shutdown.
Yeah, and I, and I, and again, ninety percent, so ten thousand of the eleven thousand customers in Mason are residents. And, and I'm guessing that there's a lot of people that still have to eat. And so for us now, you know, we've talked in the past about picking winners and losers. Now we're telling, we're directing these folks even where to go, where they can use their gift cards. So again, I'm, I'm all for this. I just think to, to double down on it right now, I, I would rather see it function and I'd rather get some reports and some data back on where are these people using this? Or are they using it? Because it still does, it, it takes action for them to show up to get the email or send in the email, get the email. It takes a lot of communication, too. Takes some communication to where, you know, I've learned that, you know, a lot, one of my good friends says about twenty-two people pay attention to city council. And so if you're not a member of the premier or you don't get, or you don't reach center point, a lot of people might not understand that this is what's being offered. So I don't know. I appreciate the amendment, Vice Mayor, but I, I really would like to see, I'd really like to see this thing function. And if we're going to, if we're going to enhance anything, if we're going to double down on anything, let's look at fifty-two because that's direct. And because in the spirit of all of these discussions and over the last eight weeks that we have talked about, it's been small businesses. And I, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know, again, I want to look at everyone and if we can, if we can help appease any, any sort of financial problems by, you know, giving someone sixty bucks a month, off for it. Let's do it. I think it's great. But I would, again, I would just like to put some water through the pipes and understand how it functions prior to doubling down.
One more thing, because we didn't address the other part of your concern, which is why would we go ahead and, and authorize the second tranche now? Can you explain the practicality of that for us, Mr. Hanson?
Yes, you can. It would be possible to authorize a second or a third tranche of, of gift card amounts at, at any points in time that you wanted. The distinction here is by using utility funds, you are, you are better served to tie that to, to, to a single transaction where we ask for the emails, you have that second tranche that's already authorized and tied to that original usage of the sewer funds. You wouldn't, it is, it is not a, it's not a tactic that you could turn on and off if you intended to use the sewer funds repeatedly. It needs to be authorized once. You could do additional tranches, but you would, you would be looking at using general revenue funds.
Aren't we authorizing it tonight, though?
Well, there's a practicality in authorizing the second wave. We may not use the second wave. But it, it is, it is cumbersome for staff and for the, for all of this to get, get moving, to get going. And so we can always not use it. But if we authorize it tonight, that doesn't mean that we're locked into that second wave. There would be some criteria in order to trigger the second wave. But we've already got all the groundwork done. So when the time were to come, we hope it doesn't, we hope there are no more shutdowns. But let's say we decide we want to in, inject another stimulus. It's right there at our fingertips and we don't have to go through the legislative process again and all the setup for it. So if we don't use it, it just stays in the sewer fund. Does that make sense?
I just, yeah, I, I do. And it makes sense. And I I, I appreciate that. But I think also, I think in the spirit of what we've, I mean, what is this thing called? The Small Business Recovery Program or Small Business Recovery?
Is it, that's all geared towards Mason small businesses. And there's, we have almost thirty participants already and we're going to hopefully get more in there. But we are not targeting large corporate stores and things like that. It's all, it's all focused on small businesses. Vice Mayor Gil, I know he would, wanted to add something during that and I'll get to you, Councilmember Nelson, if that's okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to
The motion, I forgot about that. We're, we're still on the motion to amend, but go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify some, somewhere there to, just to make clear that because of this is utilizing sewer funds, that's the issue, Councilmember Chance, is that, you know, we can't come back in September and use sewer funds again. That, that we need to, if we're going to authorize that usage, it has to be tied to a a sewer fund issue. And here we are asking people to give us some of their information, their emails that we can use in our sewer, sewer communications. Therefore, we have the opportunity to then compensate them for that. That's the reason for the two potential trenches, trenches in this gift card program. But, but it would be we'd have a hard time coming back and authorizing the similar use of sewer funds for a second wave. And
Why would it be difficult?
Because of, because of the need to use those funds for that purpose.
What's, what's in our reserve? Twenty million dollars? Is that right, Eric?
Yes, in excess of twenty million.
Okay, so what, what's so hard about coming back and asking for, to do this again if we need to? And I pray, I pray that we don't. But what, what's so difficult about that?
Sewer funds have to be used for a sewer purpose. You're defining that purpose now and the transaction with communicating to residents, receiving the email creates the eligibility for it. If you were to do that program and then come, come back and do a sewer expense for a gift card, that nexus to the sewer utility is not as strong. You've diminished that nexus. Whereas if you anticipate it now, you authorize it now, that eligibility continues. It is not a well that you can just go back to repeatedly. You have to have a nexus with the purpose of the funds, which is provisioned through our service.
I, yeah, okay, I I, one, I don't want to speak truth and never having to use this thing again because I hope we don't. I hope that we can recover and bounce back strong and that this is something that we never talk about again. But I, I, you know, I, I guess proper planning is, is, is what we're trying to accomplish here. But at the same time, I just think it's, I don't know. I'd like to see it function. That's, that's my stance.
Councilmember Nelson?
First, I want to say thank you to the staff for coming up with all these great ideas. I'm really happy that we're finally starting to do something for our small businesses. It is the middle of May, so I'm sure that everybody's hurting. Here are some concerns that I have about the sewer fund. It's great that we have a twenty million dollar excess in our, in our sewer fund. Here are my concerns for if, if ninety percent of, of the sewer revenue collected is residential and then ten percent business. So you're talking approximately six hundred and twelve thousand dollars is going back to our residents, anywhere from forty to sixty dollars per month for one month. And then sixty-eight thousand dollars going back to the businesses. The businesses haven't been open. So the businesses don't really have a bill right now, or maybe even in the next month. So are they really benefiting? I, I have a hard time believing that the majority of the residents are so eager to get their forty, fifty, sixty dollars that they're, and not maybe put that towards a small business. I wish that we can do more, maybe, you know, and the gift cards, again, this is like the third gift card program that we're implementing. And my concern, again, all along, is that it's not really being distributed fairly throughout our small businesses. And so you are going to have a large majority of the small businesses that really are not capitalizing on any of these gift card programs. I wish that we can find a way really just to provide them with, with some kind of funding based upon their payroll, the revenue that we collect from their payroll as a city to make it fair.
That, that's fifty-two. We've got to stick, we, and I
Right, right. I know. I'm just saying.
Whether to amend.
Right. I'm just not, I'm just not convinced that, I mean, that a gift card, another gift card program is going to be good for our small businesses because it's not really evenly distributed. And the the sewer program, although it's great, I wish that we can maybe, you know, take some of that money instead of the gift cards, maybe put it towards, you know, three months for businesses. Because it is such a small amount, it's only ten percent. Or maybe if we have enough funding, let's calculate how long it would be for a year for just small businesses. I, I don't know. These are things that maybe should be calculated. But I just don't see that much of a benefit going back to our small businesses on this. I mean, anything is good. I'm sure they'll be happy with anything. But if we're, if the city is going to be out the money, I would like it to be very impactful. And I'm not sure that more gift cards are really going to do, have that much of an impact on our, on all of our businesses.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Stricula.
I'll be brief. I haven't heard an exact number of how many people or businesses are signing up for the gift card program. Eric, do we know?
I believe it's about thirty.
Thirty? Okay, okay. I would, yeah, I'm just gonna, that's a small number. I'm not interested in putting a million dollars into thirty businesses. While I know that they would appreciate it, I would rather, so not for the amendment, I'll stick to the amendment piece. If that number grows and I think accommodates a larger sample size of the small businesses in Mason, then I think I, I would look at it at that point. But having just, and I know we're trying to market more, but having just thirty businesses, I'm not interested in tying up another half a million dollars to that at this point. Thanks.
Eric?
I was just going to reference that is one of, if, if council were to authorize this to whatever degree, the first step would be aggressive marketing. We would want to use the chamber to make sure and get the word out there. If there is that scale of funds available through gift cards, merchants would be well-served of whatever stripe, professional services to sign up. We would then want to encourage them to use their own creativity in what, how they, they know their customers better than the city. This would just be a you know, conduit more or less for them to communicate to their residents or to their customers, provide a service that would be attractive to, to their customer base to use the money with them. So we're not trying to stipulate too much of that. Certainly the degree to which council provides funding to the program will attract, you know, necessity, attention that folks will want to access those. Right now it's small scale because the city, quite frankly, has spent somewhere around twelve thousand dollars to make it available. That probably isn't attractive to as broad a scale of potential businesses. But if that were magnitude exponentially, that, that would germinate some of that growth anyhow.
Okay. And there was, there was mention of criteria for a second wave. Do we know what that is?
What, what the amendment spells out is twofold. If there were additional action from the state to cause a slowdown or shutdown to businesses, that would be a trigger. And if the depth of penetration, if not enough folks take advantage of the gift card or redeem the gift card, that may justify coming back and doing another wave to, to spark more participation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chance?
Yeah, just, I think I heard the number thirteen thousand dollars worth of gift cards have been used so far in eight weeks. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're looking at thirteen thousand dollars in the last eight weeks. It's been utilized in the small business and we're trying to put another. I'm cool with the, I'm, like I said, it, individually, I, I really want to gear things to small businesses because those are the folks that truly need it. Because I've witnessed even with some of the Fed programs to where I know some school teachers, some government employees that haven't missed a paycheck but got their stimulus check. And so I feel like this is just another one of those doing something just to do it and then to add on to it. Because sixty dollars a month is sixty dollars a month. I'm sure I'd appreciate it. I, you know, everyone in the city appreciated. But my, my problem is we need to gear it towards small businesses. And not only that, you just told me thirteen thousand dollars in the last eight weeks. And we want to make this a million dollars just because we want to? Why don't we just look at five hundred thousand dollars and see how that money is spent first? Because obviously the, the thirteen thousand dollars is, is, is tough sledding. And plus, you know, we don't know when these small businesses are going to open. I mean, it's, or, you know, if they, it, it, you know, if they're looking at going from a hundred, you know, people in their facility down to forty-eight or whatever that looks like. So again, I appreciate this and I really do. I, I think it's, it is crafty. I think it's, it's thinking outside the box and Mason does that as, as good as anyone. And I think all of our citizens would appreciate it. But I'm not for the amendment just because I want to see things that, if we want to double down on fifty-two, let's talk about that. But this, I don't know why we would, why we would, why we would do this without understanding the impact of it to small businesses. And if we've seen thirteen thousand dollars distributed out into the small business economy now, that's, that to me just kind of shows that it's going to, it's going to take a long time. And if we're looking at, you know, being able to, you know, get this million dollars out there. And again, we have to rely on our, our citizens to come back and get the gift card and then actually go use it. So I don't know. I just, again, hate to beat it down, but I'd love to see, I'd like to see it used.
Eric?
Perhaps my number of thirteen thousand wasn't as informed as it could be considered that that only reflects what has been redeemed. What the city has actually promoted out there in different avenues is closer to twenty-five thousand. So you're looking at, you know, maybe a fifty percent redemption.
So twelve thousand dollars is sitting in Nifty's escrow account. Is that right?
No.
So that's where
No. We get the credit for those dollars. Those are refunded back to us after the expiration date. So if the dollars don't go used, they return to the city because we're a bulk purchaser.
Sure, but I understand that. But as of right now, they're sitting in an escrow account until utilized.
No, I believe we only have, I'm going from memory here, but about five thousand dollars that's due to be refunded from Yifty.
Because if nobody redeemed it?
That, that is the residual left from what we had ordered and hasn't been redeemed through these different waves.
See, again, I just think this is, I don't know, like, yeah, let's, can we just watch it work? I mean, I think we all would want to agree. I mean, five hundred thousand dollars is a huge gesture. But doubling down on something that we don't even know is going to function properly or that our citizens are going to take that sixty dollars and put it back into our small businesses. I, we're talking about, you know, getting frivolous here a little bit.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to make a few comments and hopefully we can bring some clarification. I feel like we take one step forward with correct information and then two steps back. It's a, it's basically a prepaid MasterCard. So let's try and shift our paradigm. If I went and, and gave every sewer customer that gave me an email because I got to get it to them electronically. And we could probably do some snail mail, too, if people don't have email. We can figure that out. And I say, in addition to the fifty dollars I put back in your pocket because you're the family that earned it, it'd be great if you spend it in Mason. I can't control that, but I'm giving that customer choice. We're going to give you for signing, for giving us your email and your, or your address so we can get it to you, a prepaid MasterCard. And you can use it at any of these Mason businesses that signed up. So any business that takes a MasterCard can participate. We haven't had an opportunity to grow the program very large because we've been busy doing other things and setting this up. But I guarantee you, if somebody gave me a prepaid MasterCard and I had a choice of fifty places that I could go in Mason to use it that are small businesses, I wouldn't want to waste it. I would want to use it. Now, if it doesn't get consumed, the city's not charged for that fifty dollar prepaid MasterCard. If, if it does get used, then the vendor, the merchant, excuse me, at the point of sale has a percentage taken off and it's just whatever the percentage is you normally have with MasterCard, whatever your contract is with MasterCard. So it's a stimulus program. So we're trying to hit the demand in and the supply in. So the merchants are the suppliers, but we need to get the demand in there. So we're trying to, we're trying to hit both sides of the equation, if you will. And, you know, it, to be able to give our residents some kind of benefit in this because we have a lot of families that are hurting, a lot of job loss in our community. So it provides a little stimulus for them as well. So there is a fairness factor there and there's choice. And if a business chooses not to participate, it's their choice. Nothing unfair occurred if they chose not to be in it. And we're targeting small businesses, not, not like major grocery store chains, but small businesses, primarily those that are impacted by the shutdown. But we want all of our Mason businesses that are, that are applicable to apply. So on that motion, because it's more practical to go ahead and plan for a second wave now, I support the motion to amend for the second wave. That doesn't lock us in. It doesn't mean that if, if we decide it's not a good idea, we don't, we have to follow That doesn't lock us in. It doesn't mean that if, if we decide it's not a good idea, we don't, we have to follow through with it. So, you know, you said something about putting water in the pipes, I think, is what you said. You know, we're going to test it and we're going to see how it goes. And it doesn't obligate us to go ahead and, and use a second tranche. But if we feel like we need to, all the planning and setup is there. And we've got that, that all taken care of right now. So it, does anybody else have any questions or comments or points of clarification? Councilmember Hunter Law?
I, I just wanted to reiterate, I had that on my notes too, of what you said, that this is focusing small business. I don't know if I heard anybody say fifty employees or less. Is that in this to make sure that when we say it's what is a small business, make sure this isn't just brick and mortar? This is, this is everybody. And I think this is as fair as it gets when you do that. It's not picking winners or losers because it's, there's nothing totally fair, but this comes as close as it can be. Like I said, as, as the mayor just said, that it goes back to the citizens and helps them. And then goes from there to small businesses of fifty employees or less. So is that correct?
It doesn't say anything about fifty employees or less, right?
The intent of the program, this isn't a stipulation of Yifty, but the intent would be for this rollout to contain the merchants to the similar demographic that is eligible for fifty-two.
Well, why don't we just add that then? Why don't we, why don't we make that fifty employees or less? Because I, like I said, I could see everyone that.
Way off track, way off track. Councilmember Chance, please help me, help me get back on track. We need to address the motion that's on the floor and then we can introduce other concepts. So the motion on the floor, Jeff, would you read the motion one more time for us, please?
Sure. The, the motion was to add this additional language into section five. An additional five hundred thousand dollars may be appropriated from the sewer utility fund for a second round e-gift card program to eligible sewer customers upon submission of sufficient identifying information to be utilized if needed based upon further government shutdown or slowdown orders, as well as the rate of redemption of initial gift cards to be determined by the city manager.
Okay, I think we need to go ahead and call the roll on that. And do you have a question about the motion on the floor?
I do. Is there any way that we could strike the gift card portion of it and then make that decision later? But authorizing five hundred thousand and then in the future, if this happens again, we can determine if the gift card program is not successful or if we want to give it out in any other way. Would it make sense to do that so we're not so limited in the future?
Jeff, there's a, do we need a motion to amend the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, but right now you have a motion to amend on the floor. And it is appropriate or permitted for someone to make a motion to amend the motion.
So.
Can I do that? Yes. Can I make a motion to amend the motion to remove the stipulation of gift cards to the five hundred thousand and leave it open for us to determine in the future?
Is there a second? Is there?
Can I?
Second to the motion to amend the motion that has precedence right now?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we have council discussion.
Anyway, can he read that again? I, I just need it read again.
Any discussion at this point is only about this amendment to the amendment.
Can you read it again? I'm sorry. Like if we change that, just instruct that gift card program to hear that again?
I will try. Yeah, let me, so I, and Councilmember Nelson, you'll need to confirm that when I try to do this on the fly, that this is what, what you were intending. I think now the, the additional language would be an additional five hundred thousand dollars may be appropriated from the sewer utility fund to be utilized if needed based upon further government shutdown or slowdown orders, as well as the rate of redemption of initial gift cards. Wait, do you want me to strike that reference to gift cards?
Yes, all gift card references, please strike it.
I apologize. Let me start, let me start that again. An additional five hundred thousand dollars may be appropriated from the sewer utility fund to be utilized if needed based upon further government shutdown or slowdown orders to be determined by the city manager.
Okay, any, any discussion on that motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Josh Stricula, Councilmember Stricula, please.
Again, I, you know, the, we might not be picking winners or losers per the gift card program, but what we're picking is people, businesses that at least know about it and sign up for it. So, yeah, I'm, as far as removing the gift card part of that, then that eliminates that piece. Like I said, I, I wanted to see more businesses sign up for the gift card program before we add even more funds to it. So as far as the amendment to the amendment, I'm okay.
Yep. Anyone else? Councilmember Chance, is it?
Yeah, I think, you know, yeah, this is, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. That's, you know, that's really what I, you know, if, if I'm okay, like I said, I don't want to speak truth into anything recurring or coming back. But goodness gracious, one thing we do well is prepare. So, you know, I'd be good with that. Maybe we could fund forty-three with it. I think that would work out pretty good. So no, I'm good with that.
Okay, anyone, oh, Eric.
I'm sorry. And just to be clear here, these are sewer funds so that they have, they have a fairly restricted use. At this point in time, you have kind of two levers that we've identified. One obvious lever, which is foregoing the revenues, so a rate reduction. The other lever is an expense of, of authorizing gift cards. Not, they may both sound easy in the ordinance to kind of flip one on and flip the other off or, or take a break and come back. But in practice, they're not, even the, the rate reduction, because GCWW does the rates. The, the, the other piece of this is we have to go to GCWW. They have to reprogram the rates specific to these customers. There's going to be some negotiation over how that occurs. That is not something that you could, you know, that, that you reduce the rates this month, wait a couple of months and then decide to reduce the rates again. It's not, it's not a well that you can repeatedly go back to, especially keep in mind that nexus, these funds have to be used for a sewer purpose. And I'm just afraid that the, the more you try and go afield here or hold the funds in reserve for another use, I don't want you disappointed if we get to that point and the nexus is no longer there and you can't do another rate reduction. You would be better served to say, let's do two months of zero rates now. Or let's do three months, or let's do one month in this part of the gift card than to try and come back to the, to the well at different times. Because I don't want you to be disappointed if you come back and it, and it can't be done again because you've lost, at least it can't be done with utility funds. That is the, that's the primary point here. You could always do these type of things with general fund revenues through additional legislation.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to take out the gift card component of the, to amend the amendment, taking out the gift card component for the second tranche. And I, I like the amendment, so I'm going to support the amendment to the amendment. But I want to remind council that it, it's going to take some work to promote this. But we were okay, some of us were okay with a forty-eight hour application period for the previous grant program that was proposed with the original ordinance forty-three. So we're going to be able to get the information out there and I think the program's really going to grow. But I, I like the ability to be flexible with the second wave if needed. And I also like the, the practicality of preparing for it upfront, hoping that we don't need it. So is there any other council comment on the motion to amend the amendment? Yes, Tony Bradburn?
I understand, Diane, I had, I had no problem with Councilmember Nelson that has proposed here. I'm also hearing my city manager say, whoa, 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 you need to put on the brakes because there, there's an issue, almost a technical issue. It seems like that we almost need the finance director here to, to explain the further why we can't go back to the well. Or if we've got this money, we can't repurpose it in a little different way. Mr. Hanson?
The, the nexus here is the funds have to be used for sewer purpose. You have two levers. You can either forego revenues and you have to program that with GCWW. So you need to decide that now. It's not something you turn on and off, you know, month to month. Or you have the gift card piece and you can create the nexus now by virtue of providing information like emails. And that expense from the sewer fund is because of providing an email. If you want to come back and provide an expense again, I don't know what the benefit would be to the sewer fund.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just one of the ideas, if I can throw it out there, this might work in the future if we decide to utilize that five hundred. Couldn't, one of the things we do is for, if we wanted to go to small businesses, instead of having them reprogram it, couldn't we just say we will give you a tax credit in the amount of your, you know, la, you know, your December utility bill or whatever month or how many ever months using tax credit? So we're not having to program all the rates into the system. Just as a way to distribute the funds.
You, I think, I think we've kind of lost.
Really off track again, yeah.
I'm not the finance director. I don't pretend to be. But the sewer fund, that your sewer utility fund that you're talking about is a restricted fund and it can only be used for sewer-related projects. I don't think you would be able to use sewer, sewer utility funds to fund a tax credit.
Well, if, if I can just explain, it's not, it's a reimbursement of your sewer tax or your sewer bill. That's what it would really be and just taking it off your taxes at year end if there's a difficulty in reprogramming the rates. It is refunding their sewer bill and a way to do that would be through a tax program. But it's all connected to the sewer bill. It's the same way of reprogramming the rates, except if there's difficulty in reprogramming them, maybe refunding that money through a tax program.
At this point, Mayor, all I can tell you is utilizing sewer utility funds is complicated at best. And I, I can't answer that question of whether that would be an appropriate use of sewer utility funds because that, that's a new concept. I haven't had time to review it or talk to finance director about it. I can just tell you that we were at least comfortable with the program as it was, as it was introduced.
Yeah, it sounds like now, now that we're vetting this, now I, I think I'm not in support of the amendment to amend because it sounds like we need to go back to what we originally planned. It's all vetted out and we know that it's, it works. And if we don't need it later, we, we, we just won't use it. So, but we still need to deal with the motion on the floor. Vice Mayor, did you have something to add to that? And Eric, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say was that these are sewer funds and they're restricted in terms of what we can do with them. That, that was the impetus behind directing it towards a sewer gift card program.
And I was just going to say, what may make some of you uncomfortable, the, the simplicity of the sewer fund is that, and of the proposal is it treats all sewer customers the same. A proposal that would try and carve out sections of sewer customers for, would, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it would be a complication to those restricted funds that you, that you'd have to justify not based on outs, based on sewer usage. I, I don't know how you do that with that, you know, the one size fits all, is clean, is appropriate use of the sewer funds. Anything else, you could cross that restriction. You could still do those type of things. But you should not do it assuming that you could use sewer funds for that purpose because you may not be able to.
Okay, is this the amendment to the amendment?
Yeah, could we, if, yeah, okay, if we find out that, if we find out the gift cards work, can we do that at a later date as well? I mean, does it have to be spelled out? And the, and not only this, I think this really takes us back seven weeks now. This is why we have funds inside the government that are a lot easier to use. I mean, we identified them how many different times. And so now we're having a discussion that I've heard our city manager, I've heard our law director, I've heard our finance director talking about these type of funds that we're tapping into are very difficult to use. So here we are, but, you know, in, in regards to the amendment to amendment, if we want to double down on it but not attach the gift cards, I don't know. I, it sounds like we can't do it. So if, if that's what I'm hearing, then I'm not in favor to it. But if, if I'm here, we, could we still do gift cards at a later date if we wanted to? But I mean, gift cards are, it's tired of hearing gift cards.
We need to, we need to call the roll on the motion on the floor. Councilmember Nelson, did you have a question about the motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, you know, I think we should still support it because whether we have gift cards written in there or not, if we later find out it's really impossible to use it for anything but gift cards, we at least have that option to say, okay, it's gift cards. But if, if we, if we limit ourselves, then we're stuck one hundred percent with gift cards. So I think we should still go ahead and can, you know, consider voting for it without the gift cards. And if we have to use gift cards, we have to use gift cards.
Okay, does that work, Jeff? Her point? Isn't, I'm, I'm just not sure that it works. It's, it's a great idea. I'm just not sure that it, it works as well legislatively, practically.
I think it's difficult to answer right now. I think what we will have to, like Eric said, you could proceed this way. But what we might find out down the road is that this second five hundred thousand dollars may not be able to be used at all from sewer funds. That the time may have passed or we may not be able to tie it directly to a sewer-related expense. And if that's the case, we may not be able to use it at all. And I think Eric's point was, he doesn't want you going into this thinking that that's another five hundred thousand dollars from sewer utility fund that we are guaranteed to use. You may be disappointed if we find out we can't use it.
I'm operating on the premise, there are two ways to use the funds. One is by a rate reduction that you need to negotiate once with GCWW because they're not going to be able to do multiple rate reductions for different months. So either define it's a rate reduction now, so that can be negotiated once, or you have the opportunity to do it through gift cards. I don't know what a, a third option would be that would have the nexus to utility funds and would be done equally to all utility customers.
Let's go ahead and call the roll on the motion to amend the motion.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm clear. This is, we're voting in favor, an affirmative of the amendment to the amendment?
Yes, so this would be about taking out the, the gift card language in the original amendment that Vice Mayor offered. So it's, it basically if, to help us, it's Councilmember Nelson's amendment to the amendment.
Okay, yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
No.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
No.
Mayor Grossman?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
You guys give me a froze, my, my screen froze.
Councilmember Nelson, yes.
Yes, sorry.
And Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four affirmative votes, meaning.
So with four affirmative votes, the, the motion to amend the amendment passed. And so now the amendment reads, I'm not going to read it again, but as I did before, without the gift card reference. And that puts you back on the discussion and potential and need to vote on the amendment itself. But now what you're voting on is the amended version of that amendment, if that makes sense.
Are you sure you can't read it to us again?
I can.
Oh, thank you.
I have to keep switching between screens here.
Oh, thank you so much.
The additional language now will read, an additional $500,000 may be appropriated from the sewer utility fund to be utilized if needed, based upon further government shutdown or slowdown orders to be determined by the city manager.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any more council discussion or can we call the roll? Let's call the roll on the motion on the amendment to the original ordinance, the amended amendment.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, just for clarification, this is just adding to the existing ordinance. Is this correct?
Yes.
We're not taking anything, we're just adding into that section five, I believe.
Yep, we're not adopting, we're not to that point yet.
Okay.
All the roll.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff, help me out. Where am I now?
Okay, so now the amendment, as it was amended, has been adopted. And that puts you back in to the council discussion portion of adopting ordinance 2020-51 as it has been amended.
Okay. Is there any, any other council discussion on that? Councilmember Stricula?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments because I just talked about the amendment before. Just a couple of things, because we talked about immediate relief a couple of times with this. Eric, can you tell me when the residents and business owners would actually see the change on their utility bills?
Well, it depends on, on how council adopts it. If it's adopted as an emergency ordinance, we would immediately move to negotiating with GCWW to when they could program that, that rate change in, and then that relates to billing cycles. So if all that materializes in a timely fashion, I would hope that the bills that residents would be receiving in June would not have the sewer portion in it.
Okay.
Now, if, if the vote is different or, you know, or things are more difficult with GCWW, those could cause delays.
Sure, sure. Okay. My definition of immediate is a little bit different than four weeks from now, but that's okay. Another comment question, again, back to the gift card program. What can we do to, aside from marketing? We have, I mean, a fair amount of small businesses here as a MasterCard. I mean, can we, I mean, can we send something to these businesses and say, hey, we're going, we've got this money that's going out to the residents? We've got this gift card, MasterCard, prepaid MasterCard, whatever you want to call it. We want you to sign up, right? Because again, we, we've had a couple of comments and there's not, you know, people viewing council meetings, getting the newsletter, things like that. I mean, again, if they don't see it or if they're not active with that, I mean, what are some things that we can do to really juice that up to make sure that we have more than 30 people or 30 businesses that can accommodate that? So that's just a comment of mine. You don't have to answer it because I know that's something that you're working on. And I think that that's that's really all the comments I have. Well, I, I don't, I don't want to state the obvious, but again, we, there's a lot of difficulties here with the sewer fund. You know, we have, there, there wasn't a desire to use an economic sustainability fund for economic sustainability. And now we're using it, trying to use a sewer fund for economic sustainability. You know, which obviously is creating layers of complications here. And one of the comment, Vice Mayor Gilb, you mentioned, and I think, I'm hoping that you misspoke, but you mentioned how Mason's leading the way in a finance committee meeting. I don't know anybody who showed up to the game last that then says that they're leading the way. So it's just, maybe you misspoke on that one, but interesting concept. It'll get some money out there. I mean, I'm, I'm for it. We'll go for it. It'll be interesting.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, I would just ask that we consider not declaring it an emergency only because if we declared an emergency in June will be the month that the sewer bill will be zeroed out for our businesses. And I would prefer to wait another month until everyone is really back in operation and they're truly, truly, truly utilizing the sewer and their bill will be probably higher in July than in June. So if we don't declare it an emergency, that might help stall it by one month and it will benefit the businesses probably better than if we declared an emergency and they get their bill zeroed out now.
Eric?
If that's your intent, from my perspective, it'd be much preferable to amend it, to say the July bills than to not adopt as an emergency because that would kind of preclude us from getting the mechanism in place with GCWW. But, but if, if council prefers that it only be applied to the, to the July bill, that, that, that's a fairly simple amendment. If I could add one other component to that before it slips my mind. And my answer to Councilmember Stricula, and again, depending on the timing of the vote here, the timing of the sewer waiver, that rate reduction, doesn't necessarily have to correspond with the rollout of the gift cards. On the gift cards, I think the, the push there will be exactly what some of you have zeroed in on, making sure enough time, working with the chamber to cast a pretty wide net and give time to merchants to, to, to subscribe to that program. To the extent that the city is providing incentive, incentive is also part of the, the message and part of the motivation to get the word out there. The greater that dollar amount is, the more eager folks will be to be participants.
Okay, so Councilmember Nelson, would you want to make a motion to amend this sewer rate be dropped to zero for the month of July?
Yes, because if we do it in June, that's a May bill and half of, you know, businesses aren't even open. So yes, if we can make that amendment, that would be great.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay. Any council discussion on amending the ordinance so that the, the zero rate takes place in July? I, I'm sorry.
Chance, if you want to go, go ahead. He can go. That's okay. I'll go.
Well, hey, first of all, major kudos. It sounds like we're going to use the chamber appropriately. That is good to hear. I like that. They, again, they are the ones that know our small businesses more than anyone. So I'm glad that we are utilizing them in a manner and a fashion that they're, that they're good at. Second of all, Eric, I've heard you say it plenty of times, immediate assistance has more value than delayed assistance. When we're talking about these bills, i- is it, is it literally a true value? I mean, I see a $60, I see a $50. Is it across the board, just $50 gift cards that we're going to be issuing? Or is it the amount of their sewer?
We're on the motion to amend the month in the.
I know, because to me, I, I'm, I'm more on the immediate side. I could care less if we, if we go in July.
Implement the gift card program. We're just talking about amending the month. We can, we can start the program right away.
That's why I'm asking because if, if, if we're delaying this another till July, just because, but if it's, if it's a set amount and everybody's going to get the exact same amount, businesses, individuals, whoever, then what's, what good is it delaying?
Councilmember Chance, it's based on usage. So Councilmember Nelson's amendment is to wait until July when people are using their sewer service more so that a business is closed right now wouldn't get, wouldn't get as much of a benefit if we did it for the month of June. So she's suggesting that we wait until July to go to zero on the sewer portion of, on the sewer, the zero sewer bill portion of it. However, the gift card program will, will hit the ground running on that if we adopt it as an emergency today. That portion of, of ordinance 51 would start immediately if it's adopted as an emergency. Does that make more sense?
I, Councilman Stricula, I think this is what he was, he was meaning by this. No, it doesn't. Because, okay, so if my sewer bill's $28.72 for the month of June, I can send an email into the city. It's going to be zero, but it's 2872. I get that credit or whatever. But I'm going to send an email into the city and you're going to send me 50 bucks, right?
Yeah.
So if their, if their sewer bill's zero and it's still zero, but they get 50 bucks the next month, then doesn't it make sense to go ahead and do it right now? That's why it's clunky and to Councilman Stricula's, and this is, this is, yeah, yeah, it's. But is that right though? Am I, am I accurate in that train of thought?
Two components. One is when your bill is reduced. And that could be next month, two months from now, you realize a savings, but you don't get any type of cash.
I got you. So that's, okay. Councilmember Nelson, is that what you're thinking about is, is so they can double down on it? They can get their savings and get the $50. Okay. That makes more sense to me then.
Right, because if they're not in operation, their sewer bill is going to be close to zero to begin with. Whereas when they're in operation, they're going to have a sewer bill.
And so, but that's a, that's a delicate balance to me because here, you know, I, I would prefer, I, you know, I, I don't, I really don't know what I.
But they can get the $50 gift card as soon as the city gets the program up and running, but will allow the credit on the sewer bill to be when, when it's a higher.
Is that accurate? Oh. Don't, well, all right, good. That, thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Nelson. Now, now I'm up to speed. All right, cool. Thank you.
Okay, let's call the roll on the motion to amend to July, please.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
No, no.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
No.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes with five affirmative votes?
Correct.
Okay, so the amendment passes with five, five affirmative votes. So now let's get back on track. And we need to decide if we're going to adopt ordinance 51 now for July with the amendment that we, what we accepted earlier. Oh, I'm losing my lingo here. Is there any other council discussion or shall we call the roll on ordinance 51? Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Jeff?
So ordinance 51 has been adopted with seven affirmative votes as amended in two different manners.
Great. And so it's passed as an emergency, so it takes effect immediately. Staff can begin working on the program.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Mayor, I just want to underscore the, the program in order to have maximum benefit and speak to some of the concerns raised, we will need to take some time before issuing gift cards to Marshall merchants.
Yes.
So before gift cards will be out, I think you want to cast as wide a nut as possible. I think you're also going to want to make sure merchants have time to be creative so that those folks that aren't, maybe typically do gift cards, maybe aren't as open for full services, have the ability to put some, some plans in place so that they can be marketing their eligibility for the gift cards. So that will need some upfront time.
Yeah, I think this is, this is going to work out very well. Counsel, I would like to ask for a five minute recess. And when we return, Eric, could you share that graphic that helps explain where we're heading next when we return?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so all in, are we all okay with taking five? So it's 9:06. We'll see you at 9:11.
I'll share a full screen over.
Thank you.
We have only one more ordinance. We have only one more ordinance.
Are we ready?
Looks like we have a couple folks yet to return.
Okay, thank you. I needed to get my charger.
Okay, Mayor, it appears like everyone is, is back.
Great, welcome back, everyone. We're back. All right, we're going to be heading into item, oh, wait a minute. I misplaced my agenda. Item number nine, item number nine, ordinance 2020-52. And before we start that, we have a graphic to show you that might help bring some clarity to how 51 and 52 work. Staff prepared this.
Bear with me, I've not done this before, so I'm worried. A picture of my.
Your first share screen, screen, share, share screen. Oh, look at that. There it is. Okay, Eric.
I'm just walking through this and actually this was done just barely before the meeting, so bear with me, tried to take several of the concepts that have been discussed and put those in a grid that kind of flows. Shows the distinction between attacking in two places, both with supply. Those things that would help the kind of assistance to the merchants, you know, providing the services. And then the demand, which is creating more customers for those services. And actually, as I look at it, it looks like those words were reversed. Supply should go at the bottom and demand at the top. Under demand would be additional funds that, think of that as funds that go to customers. So by waiving the sewer fee, you're generating more money that we would hope would be spent locally, and some of the messaging would encourage that. The come together gift card would go to potential customers and would direct them to spend it locally by the participating merchants. The other gift card program is with the CDC. That is both a little bit supply and demand because the immediate payments are made to the restaurants. And then the gift cards are provided to be distributed later in a fashion to further stimulate demand. And then finally, the supply portion, which is mislabeled as demand, our service agreements and the forgivable loans, which would provide assistance to the, to the, the merchants and the small businesses themselves to help them with covering the expenses that have been impacted by the pandemic. And then the rest of it just shows you the, the, the level of where the partnership is between the city, whether that be Greater Cincinnati Works with the Sewer Fee, with the nifty yifty component for the, the come together gift card, with the made CDC for the traditional gift card program, and then with the CIC for the forgivable loans and partnership payments. And then trying to just make it simple on who the recipients are of those. Sewer fee is all sewer customers, residents and businesses. The come together gift card would be for those cus, those sewer customers who sign up. That includes both residents and businesses. The traditional gift card program would be those small businesses that are identified through the CDC program. And then on the service agreement components that are outlined in ordinance 52, that would be small businesses at different tiers, a thousand dollar partnership component and a forgivable loan between 2,500 and 15,000, depending on their, their payroll, their application, and forgivable depending on them maintaining their, their business operations into the following year. So you can kind of see the flow between what it's intended to impact, who the partnership is with, who the beneficiary is.
So all in, if we were to add up everything in the first vertical under demand and supply, if we added all of that up and we were able to use all of those resources, that would total $1,540,000 in stimulus. If we end up using the additional amended version of ordinance 51, where we end up using the additional 500,000 that we set aside there, that would be over $2 million of economic stimulus. That would add up to be 2,040,000, 2,040,000 dollars. Sorry, easy for me to say, right?
Maybe off a little bit.
Is it a little off? Did I miss something?
I think if you total up these dollar amounts, you're closer to 2.1 million. And then if you added, if you needed another 500,000, you'd be close to 2.6.
Oh, 2 points. So I did miss something. Okay. So all in, we could end up, if we adopt ordinance 52 and we consume all of 51 that we have enabled ourselves to do, that would be 2.6 million economic stimulus back in the local economy.
Yes, I'm, I'm rounding a little bit, but.
Okay. That's, that's significant. Okay. Thank you for showing us that graphic. It, it helps to see the linear progression from left to right. And then, so if individual small businesses could have a recovery of up to $3,000 from the $160,000 gift card program from the CDC. So we're talking 50-some businesses they're targeting. So we've got 30 so far in the nifty yifty, so you know, we're not, we're not too far off. We can grow that program as well. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started on item nine, ordinance 2020-52. I need a motion to read that by title only, please.
So moved?
Sorry, sorry.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, Jeff?
Authorizing the city manager to establish business recovery programs and enter into service agreements with the Mason Community Improvement Corporation in a total amount not to exceed $700,000 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Eric?
I already covered this as part of the discussion of both ordinances. Would just add that this is the, you know, the supply component, partners with the CIC, depends upon applications from eligible businesses and tries to for, follow a formula of a thousand dollars per partnerships that are customized to help their operations. And then an amount to be determined based on their payroll. And there, it would repay that either by remaining in business and generating the payroll tax or in lieu of that by repaying the loan after a year.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. So moved?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now it's time for a council discussion. Everybody has moved around on my screen. I don't know if it's like that for everyone else. I, I keep looking for you. Do we have any council discussion on ordinance 2025-2?
I, I have a few questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson?
So it appears when I'm looking at the application, if there's stipulations here that talk about if, if you're in business for one year, then the first tier is forgiven and two years, the second tier is forgiven. So I take it that we are asking for a personal guarantee then? Is that correct? Because if they're no longer in business, how can they repay those funds back unless we're asking for a personal guarantee?
We've not stipulated that. That would be part of the CIC's efforts as we put together the actual loan documents, not unlike how the Port Authority would operate. So yes, we would look for some guarantee, but I can't spell out what the, how they would do that.
Yeah, I don't think I'm for that. I think in the event that a business does end up going out of business, which I'm sure there are going to be some that do. I mean, what kind of burden are we putting on them if we're asking for personal guarantees on these, on these loans? I just don't think it's the right thing to do.
Sorry, Councilmember Chance?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think it's part of this board or part of council, you know, what we were elected.
Your volume is not very good.
My volume isn't?
That's better.
Okay, you know, we were elected and we are elected to listen to our constituents. And I think unanimously, I don't think there was one person, one person that we've heard of unless the mayor, vice mayor, you guys heard that is in favor of giving out a loan. I mean, why, I, I, you know, I, I'm trying to, you know, I, I'm trying to stay above board here, but I just get so, this is, I, I knew what, I called this seven, eight weeks ago. What this was going to happen is we're going to see some, you know, political credit legislation come down the line. It's going to be very similar, but it just has different players to it. And I would really like to, someone needs to answer my question. Why we have chose the CIC, I've heard the city. I've heard a lot of people that recommended, you know, the chamber slash CDC. What, why did we choose the CIC? When, and, and someone answered my question, when was the last time the CIC had met? When's the last time? I like all these people individually. Eric, I really like you. I love Michelle. I love Joe. I like everybody on the board. I think they're very smart guys. But I, I want someone to answer my question. Why we chose the CIC over the CDC in regards to functioning of loan application? Or it should be a grant application for small businesses, considering the definition of the CDC is to advocate for small businesses. Instead, we are going to implement this program through an entity that hasn't even met in a decade since 2010. Is that accurate, Eric?
It's been eight to 10 years, yes, since they've had.
Eight to 10 years, eight to 10 years. So now we are going to take a program and say, hey, here's, and, and not only that, but I, answer my question here, Eric. So the, the CIC is going to meet once, correct? And say, we authorize it, city go.
Well, they'll, they'll meet as many times as they need, but the anticipation is they would at least need to meet to enter into the service agreement. Staff would be listening to that. Any follow-up or fine tuning questions such as what Councilmember Nelson raised? I would anticipate an addition, at least one additional CIC meeting.
So at the very most, two meetings, and then they're going to hand the ball off to staff and say, hey, here you guys go. What's that?
At the very least, two meetings.
At the very least, two meetings, okay. But then the CDC, once they meet, approve it, hand it off to staff. We're going to, it, it's going to come into the city. And, and I've heard it, I think everyone on this council would admit to hearing that right now, staff is kind of in dire straits or at their capacity to take on anything else. And instead, what we want to do is implement programs where staff is doing all the heavy lifting. I mean, I, I just get, I, I just get mixed messages. And I want us to make sure that we're, we're hitting the same nail and, and going the same direction here because I hear that, you know, there's been things about limited government. Well, man, this program is nothing but a bloated government all over. And I'm, I'm for it. I want, I want to help small businesses. I think everybody on here would agree. I'm passionate about that. I am a small business owner. I've been a small business owner for 17 years and we are getting whipped by this pandemic. I mean whipped. You know, my revenues are down 82%. So I want to help small businesses, but I want to do it in the most efficient manner that we possibly can. And I sit here for seven or eight weeks, we sit here and watch this, this thing play out. And when I talked about analysis paralysis, this is exactly what I was talking about. This is absolutely absurd. I mean, I, I apologize. I get, I get, I, I get a little worked up, but man, this is something, and, and Eric, I'm going to quote you again. Immediate assistance is, has 10 times the value of delayed assistance. This is the exact same thing as, as Councilmember Strickula came up with literally seven weeks ago that we could have already done. And I just, I am not going to sit by and not do the right thing per, per this council because we should have, we could have done this a long time ago. But here we are, sitting, discussing this program and, and, and we're handing it, handing the ball off to an agency that hasn't met in 10, 10 years. I need that explained to me.
Uh, Councilmember Chance?
We'll do our best to answer your question since I've been in the committee meetings. I'll take a stab at it.
And I've heard those committee meetings and those are painful.
We did, we did explain, and please be polite. We did explain our preference for the CIC, the Community Investment Corporation. So that has three residents, two council members, and the executive director is Eric Hansen, and the contact is Michelle Blair. And our economic development, and I think the process. Describing, hang on. Staff will handle the application process. There's a formula there in place. And we're still working on it, but there is a formula and some metrics. So it's going to be somewhat rote, although there will be the ability to have some flexibility with it. But staff will do that presentation to the CIC. And the CIC will be the administrative arm that makes it possible to make that transfer of public dollars to the private sector. And there will be front-end oversight as well as back-end oversight. We're working with the chamber to come up with a streamlined application process as well so that it isn't, it's similar to the application process of the CDC and of potentially the Warren County Foundation. We don't know what that is yet. But just to make it easy for these, easier for these applicants to apply. And you know, from previous meetings, it's been said many times over that using the CIC gives us the ability to have an ongoing focus on small businesses. So that's one thing. So it doesn't have to end just with this initiative.
We have that.
We have a CDC that has never met.
10 years.
Program like this. Wait a minute, sir, I have the floor. Thank you. The CDC, it, what we didn't have, some of us did not have a comfort level with giving a $500,000 grant to a CDC. CDC, this CDC offered to give us some backend transparency by reporting back to us, but that mechanism of front-end transparency and a formula to follow wasn't there. And so we have a proven system that the city has used. We have our staff that can do this in their sleep. They're applying the same principles and systems that they use for larger economic development incentive packages. And it's not done with an anonymous selection committee with sole discretion over the allocation of the funds. And that's where that front-end oversight was missing there. Why the loan? We want to come up alongside these people and incentivize them to stay open. But the CIC has some discretion over hardship. And we can cross that bridge when we get to it. I'm not on the CIC, but it, we're not writing it in per se because we want to have some discretion on, you know, as time on, but the idea of making it a forgivable loan, it becomes a grant. But we don't want to just give somebody a grant that has no plans to stay open. And so we want to incentivize these businesses to hang with us and come up alongside them. And that's part of the reason for the supply, the demand side of this equation. So we don't want to just throw a grant at them and not provide some kind of. So we don't want to just throw a grant at them and not provide some kind of stimulus so they've got the demand in there. So we're trying to take a multifaceted approach to try to hit on all cylinders. And hopefully this stimulus package will get us where we need to be. Is there anybody else from the Economic Development Committee that would like to comment on his questions? Councilmember Hunter Law?
Thank you, Mayor. My statement would be just, I think it'd be real helpful for us tonight, and I want to just reach out to all my colleagues. I mean, we can go backwards tonight and focus on, and basically we all re-say and restate our stances that we've already said numerous times on where we stand and focus on the differences. We can come together tonight where we're all kind of giving a little bit and try to move forward with this piece that gets help to people right now. Okay, and I just think that's what we need to do either, because I don't think, I don't think it helps us to go backwards and trying to stir up things about the stuff that we've already stated on. That's just my two cents here.
Thank you. Councilmember Chance?
All right, you said immediate, right, right, Councilmember Hunter Law? Walk me through the immediacy of this, Eric, or somebody, because it's not going to be immediate. Let's, I would love, when you said 48 hours, Mayor Grossman, that's immediate. But I would love, it's going to take, we've heard at least two meetings. It'll take another month to get this thing implemented. Is that accurate? Or somebody, just tell me what, 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 I want to, I want a definition of immediate.
I don't think we can promise you immediacy right now, but
Well, that's what, that's what Councilmember Hunter Law just said.
But 48 hours doesn't mean that that's the correct approach. And 48 hours within an anonymous selection committee, which was the previous proposal we had, did not make me comfortable. And I didn't, as a government official, I didn't, I didn't feel comfortable with that program. But we've developed a program. We want to work as quickly as we can. I hope this is adopted as an emergency today and we will hit the ground running. Our staff is dedicated to this. Michelle Blair contacted the residents who are members of the CIC and they're very willing to get started on this. And, you know, the sooner we get started, you know, it's about collecting the applications and hitting the ground running. I think that these people will bend over backwards to meet and go through this process to get this done as quickly as possible.
You mentioned a proven, a proven system. They, we haven't met in 10 years with the CIC. What?
It works just like the Port Authority. And the system is just like the other economic development packages that we produce for larger corporations. It's just scaled down. It's based on earnings tax revenue or payroll generation, excuse me, to help, there's a formula in place if you read through your material. So that there, there's a bit of a rope system there, but it also allows for some discretion. So it won't be a long, lengthy process once we get the applications in. Anybody else have any comments about this ordinance? Councilmember Strickula?
I mean, just, just a couple. It does look oddly familiar. One comment, though, Mayor, that I want to bring up that you mentioned is you don't want to give a grant to a business that doesn't want to stay open. Have you talked to business owners that don't want to stay open?
I didn't say want. That certainly wasn't what I meant if I said it. It's about a business, if a business cannot possibly stay open, does it make sense to give them a grant? Or do we want to save that resource for a business that's trying to stay open?
So we're picking winners and losers?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, you know, again, we took something that was fairly simple, saying straightforward. We overcomplicated it, added, added, excuse me, layers of bureaucracy to it. This application is, I mean, it's interesting. The criteria is pretty familiar from what we saw recently. And I will say, you know, and I've got to agree that the forgiveness of loans and things like that, you know, I, I, again, I don't think we heard from anybody that said that they wanted a loan. However, it looks like, and maybe somebody can answer this because I want to know for sure, that there's two, two pieces to this program, right? There's that small business service partnership program, which sounds a lot like the Loews and Fishes program that was introduced by the CDC that we didn't like. But there's that program and then there's a small business expense forgivable loan program. Is that correct? There's two programs here, Eric?
Yes, components, yes.
Okay, and you don't have to apply for both. You could say, look, I just want to do the grant or the Loews and Fishes program and not do the forgivable loan.
Yes.
Okay.
You could also do both if you wish. If you qualify, you can do both.
Okay, I mean, this is, you know, we took something fairly simple, made it ridiculously complicated. I mean, I, I'll, I, I don't even know what to say. The CIC, you know, again, I mean, Councilmember Chance mentioned it. I mean, it hasn't met in 10 years. I go, whatever, right? You guys have backed us into a corner. This is where we are. Councilmember Hunter Law, I know you don't want to go back and talk about stuff because the only people that it benefits that we don't go back and talk about it are you guys, right? So let's not go back and talk about it. Let's not rehash it. Let's move forward. I mean, this, you know, it is what it is. Let's see what we can do with it. Let's see if we can help a couple of people.
We're going to help a lot of people. If this passes, and it, it's taken, you had a very good initial idea. And we've workshopped it and we've taken the components, many of the components that you proposed. And we found a pathway that accommodates everyone, we hope. And I hope this passes unanimously. I don't know if it will, but I hope that you will feel better about it. Give us a chance, but I was hoping you would see things that you were proposing and be glad that they were kept in there. Anyone else that hasn't shared yet? Councilmember Chance?
Yeah, to that point, I mean, you know, again, I don't, I, we, we talk about, you know, looking at this thing on the surface. And it does look, and we, we, we all said it. I think collectively on our, and within our six-hour sessions, we knew that 202043 was not going to be a magic wand. And I appreciate everything else that we have done. I love that we're trying to help out, you know, the residents, the small businesses, the big businesses, everybody in between, the sewer bills, the non-sewer bills and everything else. I love that. But again, I love Mr. Hanson's line of immediate is so much more valuable than delayed. And so to Councilman Strickula's point, like, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, TJ and Tony. Thank you for taking this and extending it out and doing what you guys did to it. I'm fine with that. Again, though, in 202043, we, we knew for a fact that we didn't have a magic wand, that we were going to wait one inning, boom. And that was going to cure everything. But man, it could have really helped out seven weeks ago. So here we are. It's going to be another four or five weeks to get this thing done. So don't, don't sit there and patronize Councilman Strickula with, well, we took what you had and we put a bow on it.
Chance, that is not appropriate.
It is appropriate. That's what you just did. That is appropriate.
Motive, no.
I'm repeating what you just said. We took what you had, Councilman Strickula, and made it much better.
Was not meant to patronize him. Please stop.
Well, that's what it sounded like.
Do we have anything else to add that is applicable to passing this ordinance or voting for this ordinance? Councilmember Bradburn?
I would just like briefly to say, briefly to say, this provides transparency on the front end. What was provided to us by the CDC was an anonymous committee. And I would never vote for a half a million dollars to anonymous committee to go ahead and decide how they're going to go ahead and distribute public money. This provides the transparency. It may not be as fast as you want, but it provides transparency. So who was, who was the anonymous committee? You made a comment at one of the council meetings. You knew who it was.
I did not. Stop making stuff up. You know that for an absolute fact. Stop making stuff up. You know that's a lie.
Okay, let's move on. Councilmember Nelson, please.
I just have to stick up for the CDC real quick because they're such an asset to our community. They do great things and it's really through the Chamber of Commerce who, their whole focus is our businesses. So I just, they do great work. I, I just want to say that it was an anonymous committee to everyone else but the city. The city would have known who was on that committee. And the reason it's anonymous is because they don't want anyone to have tried to persuade them to give them money over somebody else. So, and I do believe it was very transparent. They had a lot of checks and balances in place. So they are, they are a great organization. I wish that we would be using them. But I have a question on the CIC because honestly, I didn't even know what the CIC was or who they were. We haven't used them, I guess, since 2010, which I just learned the other day. Do we, who is on the committee of the CIC? Can somebody tell me that? I don't even know. I know it's old council members, but they're not even like Barbara Berry Spath was, but she's been gone. So who is on the CIC?
Eric, can you answer that?
Yes. By statute, the CIC has two council members. Currently, that is Vice Mayor Gilb and one vacancy. Barbara Berry Spath and Vice Mayor Gilb had been on the CIC. But with her departure, there's a vacancy. The other representatives from the community are Dick Staton. He is also currently the Chair of Planning Commission. David Smith, who is a longtime resident, active in economic development, both regionally, previously with Duke Energy. And Tom McCormick, who is a local resident, active in the brokerage community. That constitutes the five members of the CIC board.
And do they know they're still on it? And have they expressed an interest of continuing to be on it?
Yes, they've, in anticipation of legislation, they were each contacted to let them know that there may be a need to, to meet, to, to move forward on this. And they each expressed that they're all just good advocates for the city and they want to be helpful and they expressed that.
Okay, anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Let's call the roll.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Okay, once again, I'm looking for my agenda. I keep setting it in weird places. Okay, that was that as far as legislation. So, item 10 is recognition of visitors. Do we want to address ordinance 46 by taking it off the table? Or do we want to save that for another day? We have passed both ordinances 51 and 52, which were basically ordinance 46, broken down into two components now. So we can take it off the table and we can dispense of it, or we can keep it there and move on to recognition of visitors.
I'll make a motion to dispense of it.
Okay, so to dispense of it, we need to take it off the table, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so.
I'll make that motion to take it off the table to dispense.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, do we need to call the roll on that?
You can do all in favor, it sounds like.
Are we all in favor of taking 46 off the table?
Yes.
Yes. Is there anyone to poke? Okay, so now that it's off the table, Jeff, guide us through disposing of it. What are our options?
Well, generally, you know, ordinance 202046 is now back in front of council for consideration. Typically, the way all legislation is disposed of is through a motion to adopt. We typically do things in the positive, so you would make a motion to adopt. And then council would just need to decide if you want to vote affirmatively to adopt it or you could vote no to defeat ordinance 46. I will say, with the adoption of ordinances 51 and 52, those are probably the kind of legislation that would have been required to come out of 46 anyway. So at this point, 46 may be considered moot since you've already taken action on other related legislation. But typically, you would read it, do a motion to adopt and then vote accordingly.
Okay.
Mayor, Jeff could ask, what could we amend 46 to appoint it to implementing 51 and 52 that we just adopted? So that we're not voting against a bill that says we want to give $1.5 million to small businesses in Mason. So I would move to amend 40, now, I think it's off the table. I would move to amend it to, so that section one would read that the city manager is hereby authorized to establish business recovery programs, back-to-work programs in order to assist Mason businesses to get back to work, adding these words, by implementing ordinance 202051 and 202052.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so council discussion would be on the motion to amend ordinance 46 with the language Vice Mayor Gilb just read. Any discussion over the motion on the floor? It's the emotion, it's the motion to amend. Councilmember Chance?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that and just say, we will not point to anything else. And that is, we just heard our law director say it's a mute point. So is this necessary? It's a mute point. We're done, right?
Well.
Why are we doing that? Why, I guess, this is a sincere question, like Vice Mayor Gilb. If we have our law director telling us this is a mute point to do this, why are we doing?
I would, I would argue that we certainly don't want to be in a position where we have voted against an ordinance that seeks to help our businesses recover.
We just voted to that are recovering. We just voted them in.
Since we're in council discussion, I'll take the liberty and interject. I, I would like to amend it because of the controversy that was created by people getting ahead of the story on ordinance 46 before we could get our work done on it and creating a stigma to it that it was, it had ulterior motives that were not for the purposes we've been working for. So it would make me more comfortable and I think it would, it'd be beneficial to the public to just make it abundantly clear that it was intended for the purposes of 51 and 52. So I would support the amendment. Councilmember Nelson?
Well, I can tell you right now, there is so much controversy over that of 46 that I don't care which way you point it. I think the whole entire public saw through what was going on. So you can try to save face and point it whatever way you want. It really doesn't matter.
That is.
No point of order. You were not doing your work. You were going to vote on it that day. And so, I mean, I do not feel comfortable voting on this until I can see what the ordinance says. Because there's been times where stuff has been trying to push through. And I don't feel comfortable just coming up with legislation right here, right now, and us voting on it without even looking.
This is the motion to amend with Mike Gilb's amendment, Vice Mayor.
And we, we, obviously, this was planned because Mike Gilb had it all written and he was reading it. I don't really know why you guys are doing this. Again, I, well, I do. It's to say.
That signing motive, again, inappropriate against the rules.
Well, you know, you guys should have talked about this long ago and not make it look like now that this was your idea all along because it was not your idea.
Councilmember Nelson? Point of order. So when we redirect back to the rules, you need to stop breaking the rules and follow the rules.
I'm speaking. I have every right to speak.
Yes, but we have a set of rules of decorum and you have to figure out how to make your point within those rules. Anyone else?
You shouldn't interrupt me when I speak. You are absolutely right.
Actually, it's my job to interrupt you when you're off track and to redirect you to get back on to rules.
Well, I don't feel comfortable without reading it.
Vice Mayor Gilb, would you mind reading the amendment one more time?
Certainly, it's very, very simple. It would just, just adding the words at the end of section one, by fully implementing ordinance 202051 and 202052.
What does section two say? What is, was that section one or two?
Yes, so section two is that the city manager enters, enters into service agreements that are appropriate for the programs, which is what 51 and 52 just did. And section three is that it complies with to be an emergency.
Anyone else? Okay, let's call the roll on the motion on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, Josh Strickula. I'm sorry, Councilmember. Okay, let's call the roll on the motion on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, Josh Stricula. I'm sorry, Councilmember Stricula. I didn't see you there.
Yeah, I'm not interested in voting for amendment that's just to save or for political purposes.
Okay, again, point of order, violation.
No, it's not. It's not. You said it. You said it would make you feel better if.
I wanted to bring clarity.
Exactly. So the only reason we're voting to amend it, as opposed to just shooting it down, is simply because you would feel better about it.
No, that's not. Councilmember Stricula, believe me. I don't come here to feel good. I would like for the public to feel better about it. Let me rephrase it. I want the public to understand there was never a nefarious ulterior purpose for 46. That's why I'd like to bring clarity.
I hear you. And, and, but that's, I'm not interested in that either. We can just simply vote it down, and there's nothing there.
We have to deal with the motion on the floor.
I understand. I'm going to vote no for this amendment. My next question is to Mr. Forbes, or I guess this will depend on whether I vote no or not, is what does, what does this allow 46 to do as amended? Right? Because it was, it was a pointless ordinance to begin with. It didn't have any teeth to it. It didn't do anything. Right? I mean, that's what's been said. So amending it, I mean, what happens with this thing?
If it's amended as proposed, and then the ordinance is adopted with that amendment, the only thing that ordinance 46 would, would do would be to authorize the city manager to establish business recovery programs, back-to-work programs in order to assist Mason businesses to get back to work by fully implementing ordinances 202051 and 202052. It would give the city manager no further authority to do anything beyond what was just authorized in 51 and 52.
Okay, does it limit the ordinances that were just passed? Because in 46, it has a 1.5 million dollar, dollar figure.
No, it does not, because section two of ordinance 46 remains the same. That says the city manager is authorized to enter into service agreements for amounts not to exceed the amount appropriated for such programs. And 51 and 52 appropriate the funds for those programs.
Okay.
That's a really good question.
So, okay. So again, we're voting for an amendment to an ordinance that didn't do anything because we've already passed ordinances that do something. Because we don't want to vote no on an ordinance that didn't do anything, but says that we want to support small businesses. Is that right? Is that what I'm getting? Is that? Did I say that right, Vice Mayor Gilb, that we're voting for an amendment to an ordinance because we don't want to vote no on an ordinance that doesn't do anything? For, I'm just trying to figure it all out.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think 40, so I think it's just clarifying what 46 was all about in terms of providing assistance to the business community in Mason, which we've done through 51 and 52.
Okay.
Because it wasn't clear.
Because, because he didn't let us fully develop that in 46.
Were you going to pass it that night?
Hold on, I didn't let you.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Back to the rules. Back to the chair here.
Vice Mayor, come on.
Councilmember Stricula, let's not assign motive, and let's not make this political. Let's just get this done.
Nor if he said, he's the Vice Mayor, said I didn't let him, let you.
You didn't. You guys interfered quite a bit, but we wanted to have a placeholder umbrella to work under. To replace, to replace ordinance 43 in its original form, because it was not something that we could handle. Not handle, handle's the wrong word. It was not something that we could vote for, some of us. But we wanted to do something to replace it and to show in good faith that we were willing to really work hard to support these small businesses, and we have a plan that's almost four times as big. All right, let's call the roll on the motion on the floor, which is to amend ordinance 46 so that it is tied into ordinances 51 and 52, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Actually, the original amendment that Brad, Councilmember Bradburn made was to bring it off the table and to vote it down. And so if that's the case, then we've done.
That wasn't it.
It, it was. That is.
Bring it off the table.
It was to bring it off the table and dispense with it.
Correct. We're in the process of dispensing right now, which is we have, we have to honor the second reading of it and go through this process. So we're in the middle of it. We're getting there. Okay.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Chance?
No.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
No.
Hmm?
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes. Okay, so the amendment has passed, and now we need to call the roll unless we have any further council discussion on whether or not to adopt ordinance 46. Is there any other council discussion that applies to whether or not we should adopt 46? Councilmember Chance?
Yes, I have a question. We have a law director for a reason, correct? And we, our law director just basically said that 46 is a mute point. But you mentioned that you didn't want this to be political. But we literally just saw it be political right in front of our eyes.
Okay.
I want to ask, I want to ask, I want to ask, I want to ask Mr. Forbes, why was your, your professional opinion that this was a mute point?
My point all along has been ordinance 46, as, as it was initially introduced, did not authorize the city manager to do anything specifically. It would have required further legislation. You've done further legislation now with 51 and 52. At this point, what I said was, it would have been fine to vote 46 down because it was not necessary to authorize anything, because it's been authorized by, by 51 and 52. At this point, it's been amended, and if it's adopted in the form it is now, that's perfectly fine. It doesn't do anything more than what 51 and 52, we're, we're just, just did.
Okay, originally, when we discussed 46, it was going to be voted in that night. Is that accurate?
Call the roll.
No one wants to answer that?
Not Jermaine. We need to call the roll.
Chance?
No.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
No.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
There's no point in it, so no.
Okay.
That ordinance received four affirmative votes, so it's adopted. As it was presented, it was presented as an emergency, so it was still adopted, but without the emergency clause.
Thank you. Okay.
So does that mean 51 and 52 cannot be an emergency?
No, it has nothing to do with 51 and 52. They were adopted on their own independently, both as, as emergencies.
It's time for recognition of visitors. Item 10. Do we have anybody in the queue?
Unless, Jeff, Jeff, is there anyone coming to council chambers?
No, there is not.
Then it would be appropriate for council to pass a rule, given the format here for any time limit to individuals and as a whole. It appears, and then to remind anyone that is, has registered for the meeting, if they would raise their hand to indicate that they would like to speak. Once council passes the rule, I believe you'll have as many as four participants that, that may adjust as folks join in.
Okay. We've, we've been here before. What, we need somebody to make a motion to establish the rules. We've done anywhere from two to four minutes per person with no interaction between our visitor and council.
How many do, did you say? How many do we have?
Right now, it appears like four.
But let's, I, there's no reason to limit four, is there? We've never done that in council chambers.
Given the format, it says, but it's up to you.
We need to have a limit in this format. So, and then we, obviously, the 60-minute cap, which I forgot to mention. Is there somebody who could present a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for five minutes.
Five minutes? No interaction between council members?
Correct.
And visitors, and a total of 60 minutes, in case we get some more people. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Hold on, please.
Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jennifer, do you have audio?
I, I do. Can you hear me?
Yeah, there's a little feedback.
Okay, well, let's try this. We're going to start with Mr. Thomas Dawson. He will be followed by Mr. Randy Stegboer. Mr. Dawson, if you'd like to address council, your time will start once you begin speaking. Eric, I think you have to give him control.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody being up late on a Monday night here. It's interesting to start to get involved and listen to the dialogue here. So I, I tried to make some quick notes. And, you know, 51, 52, it's moving that to 46. I can appreciate, you know, trying to make sure that what I put forth goes through and is implemented properly. But I, I just don't see how helping out with my water bill and a couple gift cards right now in two months, when all this stuff comes through, the revenue's not there. And I'm still struggling to do what it is that I came to Mason to do, and that's run a small business and feed my family. And I can appreciate both sides of what was explained, and I don't think that's enough. I don't see a few gift cards, opening up Cunningham's Dance Studio, Petrelli's, The Wildflower, all these places that need desperate help. And we're patting them on the back and just saying, good luck. I appreciate my time. I wish I could say more. Very passionate about this, and you're going to hear more from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Next up is Mr. Randy Stegboer. He'll be followed by Mr. Glenn Garvin. Mr. Stegboer, if you'd like to address council, your time will start once you start speaking.
All right, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate the more time. The four minutes was always seemed a little rushed for me. First, I'd just like to say, Mayor Grossman, you, the past couple meetings, you've been doing a great job coordinating the meeting. I understand that that's a difficult job for you. And you've, you've done tremendous over the past couple meetings. Today was a, today was, was a pleasure watching you guys work together for the, for the first three quarters, eight, 80% of it, you know, compromises, you know, and talking back and forth and not yelling at each other so much. You know, that, that was a pleasure to see, certainly. As, as far as the 52 goes, I'm glad, I'm glad that it happened. However, you know, I'm, I'm with Councilman Chance and Stricula Nelson saying that, you know, to me, you know, when, when I read 52, I said, wait a minute. You know, this does look familiar. Oh, my gosh, you know, the only differences that I saw was 200,000 more dollars in the CIC thing. And likewise, I looked up, you know, where, what is this CIC thing? And you couldn't find any information about it at all. It seems to me that had some of this discussion happened two months ago with regard to 43, you could have compromised those things into it then, instead of delaying this two months that, that the small business needed the help already. You know, it just, it seems like a delay to me, or, you know, and, and you add on to that the last 10 minutes of the meeting where Vice Mayor Gilb was just, just so heartbroken that he was going to have to vote down something that he proposed, you know, just because to save face. You know, no matter what you say, that's the only reason you did it. You did it to, so that somebody couldn't have a political ad against you or something, I'm not sure. But that's what it sure seemed like. And it, you know, you should have just had the vote, voted no and be done with it. And you could have saved 15 minutes of the meeting as well. Anyway, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. Goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. Garvin. Next up is Ms. Courtney Tong. Ms. Tong, your five minutes will start once you begin addressing council. Thank you.
I think it's Glenn Garvin is next.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garvin. You'd like to address council.
Yeah, thank.
Followed by Ms. Courtney Tong.
Yeah, thank you. I really didn't think I was going to have to speak tonight. I, I didn't plan on it at first. I mean, I thought about it since Councilman Bradburn still, Councilman Bradburn still hasn't answered my question that I've asked two times now, and I'll ask it a third time since I am here to, to speak now. Back on April 23rd, did you write by yourself your statement that you read at the special meeting? Or did you receive, receive input, editing, or feedback in any way from the council members prior, or mayor, prior to that meeting? So I, I really would. That's the third time I've asked that question. I'd appreciate an answer. But I found myself compelled to express what I saw tonight as, as clear bias and unprofessionalism expressed by the mayor this evening. The last caller was, was correct. The meeting and the last meeting both started great. They were going along really well, and then the mayor created discord. Her hypocrisy in assigning motive to many, myself included, but primarily to anyone who opposes her agenda is, is truly unbelievable. Her interruptions are obviously directed at certain specific council members. I mean, her, just the, from the look of her face, the, the, the tone of her voice, the way she attacks certain council members is just unprofessional. The amount of work that occurs behind the scenes continues to be a concern to me as the agenda, pre-written statements, coordinated efforts to speak of a council of seven, not of, of four, not of seven. There's a group with, with the coordinated effort that goes on. While that may be legal to do, it seems disingenuous to be prepared with all of these things without discussing them with your fellow council members and then doing that. But finally, that, that last, and then the caller just before this said the same thing. The political posturing and then pretending it wasn't exactly that to save face, to the point of yelling at Councilman Chance for impugning motive when he was just paraphrasing what the mayor and Vice Mayor Gilbs have already said. And frankly, paraphrasing much more accurately than the mayor has done in the past. This, this was just nonsense, and just that political posturing for the sake of nothing but saving face. That, there's no excuse for that. And then just have all four of you vote yes. TJ, yawn if you, if you want to through this, but this is you too. You voted yes to, for what reason? How to defend yourself to say, yes, I voted yes for that, when it is no reason other than political posturing, and you said it yourself, and then to call it impugning motive, when you said it specifically that way. I do want to thank Eric and the city staff who came up with a creative way to use the water fees in support of our small businesses. Great job being creative and trying to find a way to make that, to make that work. But council, you got, you got a lot of work to do. And maybe there's some training you can do on treating each other with some of that civility and lenity that you, that you preach so much about, Mayor. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garvin. Next up is Ms. Courtney Tong. Ms. Tong, if you'd like to address council, your five minutes will begin once you start speaking.
Some, I had no, I had. Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Tong. Go ahead and address council.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I wanted to speak tonight about a topic that I also brought, brought up during a council meeting on April 25th. During that meeting specifically, I requested that Mayor Grossman address the comments made by Councilmember Bradburn during a council meeting on April 1st, when he referred to the COVID-19 pandemic as, quote, "the Communist Chinese Party virus." I've sent three. I've sent three email requests in addition to speaking at the April twenty-fifth meeting. I know other members of the community have also sent emails, and I've heard no fewer than four individuals request that this topic be addressed during public comments allowed over the last two council meetings. So I'm speaking again to council tonight to share why this remains an important topic to me. When Councilmember Bradburn referred to the COVID-nineteen pandemic as the Communist Chinese Party virus, it tells me that he has a bias. Whether this is a conscious or unconscious bias, I do not know, but I know at a minimum that a bias exists. This is important for me and other members of the voting community to know about our elected officials. For Mayor Grossman to not address his comment immediately also tells me that she has a bias. I've seen Mayor Grossman direct other council members immediately. I've seen her do it multiple times this evening. So I know that it's not a matter of not having the ability to do it. So that the fact that it wasn't addressed immediately tells me that there's a bias there. Maybe it was unconscious, and Mayor Grossman didn't think about it at the time the comment was made. However, for Mayor Grossman to continually ignore direct requests from Mason residents to address this language tells me that this is a clearly conscious decision by the mayor. A conscious decision to not only allow for this type of divisive and biased language, but also a conscious effort to ignore multiple requests made by the community who disagree with her. The residents of Mason deserve to know what types of bias exists on our, within our elected officials. This topic is relevant, and it's important for the mayor to address. So again, and for the fifth time, I'm asking Mayor Grossman to address the comment made by Councilmember Bradburn. I ask that the mayor publicly acknowledge that Councilmember Bradburn's comment is unacceptable and that this type of language will not be tolerated in the future. I'd also like to end my statement by highlighting that May is National Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The Mason City Schools shared via Facebook today that the members of the Mason community and unity capitalized, the Mason City Schools community celebrated the Asian Heritage Month by providing delicious hot meals from Twin Dragon, which is owned by a Mason family, and craft bags for families facing economic hardships due to COVID-nineteen. This activity was sponsored by the APAPA, the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association, the OCAA, the Ohio Chinese American Association, and the Mason Kualsha Chinese School. So while the city of Mason leadership has not taken the opportunity to show up and stand up for the members of the Mason, of the Mason Asian American community, the Asian American community has continued to show up to support the city of Mason and its residents. So Mayor Grossman, will you take the time tonight to address this issue? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Tong. That's all the visitors I have to the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are now to the point in our agenda, item eleven, which is old and new business. Do we have anyone with old and new business? Councilmember Nelson.
I do. I have a few things today. Last week, the Ohio Senate introduced Senate Bill Three Ten, which was sponsored by Republican Senator Dolan, that creates a mechanism for the state to distribute nearly one point two billion dollars in federal financial aid to Ohio local governments below five hundred thousand in population as provided by the CARES Act. The Ohio Senate voted unanimously to support the bill. The bill has been sent to the House, where we hope it will receive the same degree of urgency. The federal government did grant four point five billion dollars to Ohio. Senate Bill Three Ten will dispense three hundred and fifty million dollars through the local government fund formula in a separate distribution fund to be used for non-budgeted COVID-nineteen-related expenses. The remaining funds, which could be up to eight hundred and fifty million, would be held in a reserve by the state for a second round of funding. The Ohio Municipal League, as well as other local groups, are urging the Ohio General Assembly to ensure that all of the remaining eight hundred and fifty million dollars is dedicated to and used exclusively by local governments. Additionally, should the federal government provide greater flexibility for use of these funds, the league and our local government partners request that the second phase of funding be released to local governments for revenue replacement based on specific community needs. So that is really good news. I will be watching this to make sure that, you know, this may be extra funds for our city to help out. Also, I'm watching, in the past four years, I've been an advocate for our city against House Bill Forty-nine, which was passed, and that is centralized tax collection. And what centralized tax collection is, for those of you who are just tuning in and haven't heard of it, the state of Ohio had created a program that would allow businesses to register with the state and pay their net profit tax directly to the state of Ohio. The state of Ohio would take a percentage cut and then give the money back to the city of Mason. So essentially, it's, it's Mason dollars that are being taken from us. Mason has never had an issue or a problem collecting taxes, and we've been very affected, effective and efficient in collecting them. So this program is actually extremely concerning because although it is right now just for net profit tax, I do fear that eventually it will be mandated, and it will also include individual taxes. It's, it's, it's a very bad thing for our city. Mason tax dollars should stay in Mason. So I have been a huge advocate for a city in fighting against House Bill Forty-nine. There is a hundred and sixty cities after this House bill has passed, there's a hundred and sixty cities who sued the state of Ohio. And currently, it is sitting in the hands of the Ohio Supreme Court. And so the Court of Appeals has been scheduled to discuss this on Wednesday, May thirteenth. And I will be following it very carefully, and I will post something on my city council Facebook site, as well as report on our next council meeting as to what happened during that, during the Ohio Supreme Court hearing. Also, on a totally different related note, I, I have created or would like to create a committee separate from the city, and I would like Ashley Chance and Josh Stricula to join me in this, in this new committee, and it is going to be the Small Business Economic Recovery Committee. I think that once businesses get back in operation, they're going to need some guidance and some, and some support, and I would like this committee to, to help with that. I would like to invite business owners and residents to be part of this committee in this forum that I would like to have to hear what their ideas are and how we can help with the Small Business Recovery Act, kind of be the liaison between the small businesses and the city. You know, Councilmember Chance, Councilman Stricula, and myself have become very active with our small businesses. We've reached out to them. We've, we have communication with them on a continual basis to help support them. And so I think that having, you know, Councilmember Chance and Stricula there, this will make this very effective, effective committee that can really help out. So if you stay tuned, we will be putting some information out there as to, it's going to be in a public forum, hopefully a Zoom meeting similar to this right now. And then, of course, hopefully, we can meet in person. So I will give you some more information on it, the dates and times, but I would really like for our small business community to really take part in this and let us know what you need. For instance, what can the city do to help some of our restaurants? Some of the other cities are allowing tables to go out on sidewalks to help with the six-feet requirements that are out there. So I would like to see some, you know, something put into place by the city that's going to allow some of these restaurants to spread out a little bit. But these are some of the topics that we can discuss, and I will give you some more information on the date and time. And I hope that as many people tune in as possible, and I hope that Councilmember Chance and Stricula can, you know, can be part of that as well. And again, it's going to be independent of, of the city. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Councilmember Chance.
Yeah, I would just, I, I would certainly challenge Mr. Bradburn to show me where I mentioned that I knew who the secret committee was or whatever like that, because I don't like words being put in my mouth. If I misspoke, then I will certainly apologize to everyone, but, you know, that didn't happen. I know it didn't happen, and stating those type of things is uncalled for. And I just, you know, Mr. Bradburn, i- i- if you could, I would, I would clearly like to hear that, and if I owe the apology, because I can tell you right now, I have no idea or could have known any idea or anything along those lines. So to continue to try to, to, to spread those type of things, I just, you know, is, is not good. And so, yeah, go ahead. If you want to do it now, I'd love to hear.
Bradburn, would you like to respond to him?
I will go back and review the tape, and if I misheard it, I will apologize.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor.
Yes?
This may be, we, we have another commander, Looker, would like to have participated in the recognition of visitors but was not able to get registered on time. He is there now at council, wishes to recognize him.
I think, I think my colleagues won't mind. Is that okay with everyone? All in favor for John Looker?
Yes.
Love Mr. Looker. All right, come on over, Mr. Looker.
John, if you can hear me, you need to unmute your microphone, and you should be able to speak now.
I'm sorry. I thought he was in the room with Mrs. Heft.
He's online.
He's online. Okay. If you get him, do you want to just have him pop in?
Yeah, maybe while we're wrapping up. John, if you can hear me, you need to unmute your microphone, and you should be able to speak then.
Eric, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, a few things I'd like to address. I've been working with Jenna on the inner program, and we're getting pretty close to getting the application set up. So what we're going to do here quickly, I think, is try to get all the members of the Veterans Committee together to analyze some of these stuff on the application that and I've been working on, like cost of the flags. Understanding is a hundred and sixty dollars for the two-sided flags at from this, from the case where we're king and from. So we have to talk about how we're going to sell them to the veterans. I think, in a year, and Jennifer, you're in charge of setting up those meetings, correct?
You mean the Veterans Committee meeting?
Yes.
Um, I think it'd be, it's a coordinated effort. Do you know what, Mr. Looker?
One, so that we can get together and discuss the application that Ken and I have been working on.
We'll make that happen.
All righty, thank you. Second thing, we have a World War II veteran who's going to be turning one hundred years old, Mason here. His name is Lloyd Thomas. Going to have a drive-through at the church, Mason, or West Mason Church of Christ, sixty-eight-hundred, Hattersville Road, Mason, on the Saturday, May twenty-third. And I would like to get word out, I think, did I send you that information, Eric?
No, I've not seen that unless you sent it this evening.
No, I haven't. Okay, I'll send it to you. I think it would be very nice. I'm trying to get the Legion Riders involved. Also, Chapter Nine of the Rolling Thunder involved. Also, Opie, and, well, some of you probably know, trying to get some classic cars over there. I start at ten forty-five on May twenty-third. I'd like to see as many participants over there recognizing this moment one hundredth. So it's basically all, yes.
Do you think you could get a photograph to the city of Mr. Thomas? Is it Lloyd Thomas?
Lloyd Thomas, yes.
Do you think you could get a photograph to help us advertise the event?
I will. I'll, if I can get ahold of him tomorrow, if I can get a picture of it and of him, and I'll put it out, the information about where, when, and how this event's going to happen. I think it's something we really need to recognize, especially since we're going to miss Memorial Day, that we need to recognize this World War II veteran.
Mr. Looker, this is, this is Ashley Chance. Also, get ahold of me. We had a parade, and I think we had close to ninety cars in it, and I would love to emulate that for obviously a World War II vet that's turning a hundred years old, and I think we could turn that on rather quickly and get, because it was, it was a red, white, and blue theme, and so I think that would obviously be pretty appropriate, and I think we'd be honored to do that. So if you want to reach out to me, you have my email, and we could possibly help coordinate getting, you know, eighty, ninety cars there. I think that would be kind of cool, so.
I think it's, it's really neat. This gentleman who we're trying, he can't be out and about. You know, nice drive-through, came through. I just went to a drive-through baby shower last weekend. It was pretty neat, because they had set up six booths. You could have one, you have a little thing about a crossword. Oh, you do. The time you get to the end, you know, you had to stay your safe distance, but you got, yeah, my niece, who is having the baby, standing behind you, they put up a big picture frame, and they got you picture with you and her in a picture frame. So I think this would be really neat to have this done. So we'll picture out, try and get that tomorrow, send the information to you, Eric, Jennifer, Mayor Grossman, if you'd like. Anybody that would really like to be involved in this, I think it'd be great.
Mr. Looker, it's Diana Nelson. I will also connect with Blue Skies for the Good Guys and Gals Warrior Foundation. They will be able to gather a number of individuals together as well to make it a special forum.
Send it to David and also, also to Abby and to Rachel, so.
Okay, perfect. I will follow up and make sure that we, we make that happen.
What about a jump?
Hey. I've already made my two jumps. I'm done.
Come on, you can do it again.
Now. That's all I have, Mayor Grossman. Thanks for allowing me to come in.
Thank you, Mr. Looker. Thanks for, thanks for looking after our veterans as well as you do. You are so wonderful. Our, our community is so blessed to have you and all the great care that you take. Okay, we're, we're back in old and new business. And is there anyone else that has something they'd like to say? Okay, Councilmember Stricula.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One, I want to bring up the Mason Deerfield Community Development Corporation, the Pay It Forward Program, the grant program, which is now a grassroots effort. As off the ground, the first round of funding has gone out. They had seventeen thousand five hundred dollars that went out in grants. They've also had businesses that have already paid it forward, and are looking at having a second round as well. So if there's businesses out there that are looking to apply for that program, they can. And let's see, so the second round, round is about eighteen thousand dollars that they have. So they've had grants that have ranged from two hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars that they've given out. So some really great things going on there with the Maids CDC. So, and then another comment about the CDC, which I think is important, is that even despite the things that have occurred and the continuous accusations against them, they still are willing to work with the city and work through a, an interinter service agreement with the amended forty-three. So really appreciative to them and the efforts that they're doing. And I do, I do want to address Mrs. Tong's comments and questions, because she's right. There's been a lot of issues or comments, residents that have brought this up. And I'm not going to speak for any other council member. I'll let them do that, but, I mean, at the very least, his comments were unnecessary and inflammatory. And so I'll apologize for that. It, it's, it wasn't necessary. It wasn't needed. It didn't add a point to it. It didn't add any additional information, and it shouldn't have happened. And, and it did. It clearly offended the Asian American community in Mason. And so, so I will bring it up. Mrs. Tong, thank you again. I'm sorry that it took you five times to get a response from us, but I will bring that up.
five times to get a response from us, but I will bring that up.
Anyone else?
Real quick, I'm sorry, but Diana, I would, I would love to be on that committee or whatever we want to call it, so just to go on the record that I'd be willing to do it.
All right, I've got a couple of notes. First of all, I just would love to thank our staff and just our economic development team, our finance team, our committees that worked, and those and our staff, which is a diverse group of our staff that are on the Small Business Recovery Team, and the research that they've done over the past few weeks, and the ingenuity and innovation they've shown, and they took, you know, they took an idea, and we were able to implement a program, and I'm just so thrilled that it passed tonight, both ordinances passed tonight, and I want to thank my colleagues for that. I think we're going to have a very successful program, I'm very optimistic about it, and I think, as far as I know, it's the most aggressive and multifaceted program in the state. So we will put it to the test, and I hope that we have great results, and of course, we all wish our small businesses the best, and I really, really hope that our residents are out there supporting them to the best of their ability as well. I'm taking a look at my notes, forgive me. As far as ordinance 46 goes, that was a placeholder, that was sort of the visionary ordinance, and I, I'm very disappointed to hear people say things like saving face. We needed to deal with that because there were so many rumors about what that legislation was for, and it's not for my own comfort, it's for the comfort of the public. And so I really resent those allegations by some of my colleagues and one of our visitors today, or maybe two of them, I don't know, or three of them, who knows? But the political posturing line and all of that, that's just not necessary, and our, my colleagues unfortunately started that. But, you know, there were a lot of rumors about that, some generated by my colleagues, a lot on social media, they were not true. 46 was an ordinance to hold the place of a program in good faith, and we were able to develop that and deliver that today. And I told you guys we were gonna deliver a program, and we did, I'm really excited about it. And again, thank you to our staff and the members of our community investment corporation for the hard work that you are about to continue doing for us. And as far as Mrs. Tong's request, Mrs. Tong, Mr. Bradburn did not violate the rules when he said Communist Chinese Party virus. He wasn't directing that comment at people. He was directing it at the Chinese Communist Party, per se. You know, we're all here, we've had hours and hours of dialogue, sometimes our comments are not polished, and there's not one person on this panel that has had 100% polished comments, I can assure you of that. But I did not rebuke him at that time because he was not out of order, he did not violate the rules. I'm very sorry that you were offended. I don't believe he meant to offend you, and I can't speak for him, I can only speak for myself. I know that he's not someone that would want to offend, and, you know, I just hate to see that go any further. We value all of our community, and I'm sad that you assigned that, that character to me, that somehow I showed bias against our Asian American community. That's not true, that's baseless, I wish you had not done that, and I think I'll leave it at that. All right, I think that's all I have on the old and new, oh, well, go ahead, Councilmember Bradburn?
Yeah, just briefly, I noticed on the CIC that this is, Ms. Barbara Berry's face obviously is not on that, and it has to be another council member, if there's no problem, I'd like to volunteer for that, I guess, time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yep, so I checked on the nomination process, and I can make a recommendation to the CIC, it's an independent body, and it will make its own appointment, but I will recommend you to the Community Investment Corporation, did I just get that wrong? Sorry, I'm getting tired. Yes, I'll make that recommendation, thank you for volunteering. Okay, I think that is a wrap, so we need a motion to adjourn.
I'd love to make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, call the roll, please.
Member Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
No. Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jason.